Agenda item is we'll start with PFC twenty twenty two zero nine seven for eighteen eighteen fifth Avenue. The applicant heard come up.
Good. Thank you. Can you talk in the mic make sure? Yeah, bottom, very bottom of it. Yeah, test us. Thought we were good. Test us. There we go. You just gotta be right up on it. So I can do that.
Ah, I mean, candidly, I think that, you know, I would really open up if there are any questions. Obviously, you know, this is always an evolutionary process and continue to solicit feedback and incorporate what we can into the project. You know, we did have a great visit with HRC. You know, I think I don't want to speak for them, but felt it was a really good engagement and generally a positive one in response to our design. And then I think obviously also we went to the BZA for a variance for the rear yard setback, which we were granted, which will enable us to provide the parking that will be screened from Fifth Avenue on the backside. So sort of as we've incorporated into our TDMP.
Okay. So Commissioners, do we have any comments on application materials that's submitted, anything that's come up in the review last month?
I have two. I read everything everybody other signs to us. And there were two letters that especially made me stop and think. And one of them was about parking, about how there's no way out of the number of cars that you say spaces that you need will be enough. That's number one. And number two is the request for a front setback, which will help cut down the lack of light to the people across the street. So if you could.
I'll start with the first, which is the project, of course, is compliant with the zoning. And obviously we saw the variance for the one aspect that was not, but again, that was to accommodate additional onsite parking to address the first issue that you raised. As regards the setback, the comprehensive plan in the zoning actually encourage zero lot setback. The maximum setback is actually ten feet. We voluntarily, as part of our engagement with the neighborhood and in hearing feedback, talking to Jack Wade, looking at historic photography, I did actually set the building back off of the sidewalk about four feet. We did that voluntarily. You know, there's some debate about where the original setback ended up. And I don't want to mix up setback from the sidewalk from setback off the street. There's been some contention that the setback off of the sidewalk, I'm sorry, off of the street was twenty five feet. We haven't seen any documentation to actually verify that. Nevertheless, the, we couldn't even do that under the new zoning because that would actually exceed the ten foot setback. So what we tried to do again, we're balancing different needs. One is the parking in the rear. The second is the comprehensive plan and the urban planning direction to minimize the setback and also the consideration of light for the neighborhood. So we've moved the building back four feet as a way. So that gives us a setback about nineteen feet versus the twenty five foot setback right now. You know, building and then I will say that the zoning also allows us to build as of right five stories, which would certainly have more of an impact on the lighting to the street. We made the decision not to do that. We also made the decision not to do an occupied roof deck, specifically not to enhance or amplify any of that urban shading condition. Although it should be noted that pre fire, the buildings on that street were actually four stories high. And we do have photography that we can show you of what that looked like before. And so the building height that we've achieved is effectively about the building height mirroring the buildings that are across the street. So kind of recreating the historic condition. And as I think I said previously, as we develop the building out of concept, we will continue to look for ways to lower the overall building height again, with that, you know, with the neighborhood in mind as we do that. We've already shaved about eight inches off and we believe that there's more.
Thank you.
Sure. And then I think there was a question about parking. I could say we tried to, I think we have a very detailed TDMP, which I think addressed a lot of how we're evaluating parking. You know, we spent a lot of time on the demographics as a building operator. It is a risk for us hypothetically, if we can't deliver what our tenants need. Our belief is that our building will not generate the level of parking that, you know, is a concern. And we've obviously done a parking capacity study in the neighborhood to show that there is actually ample capacity, not to mention surplus capacity in Fifth Avenue garage. And that's just within one block radius. And that's in addition to the fourteen spaces plus four to six spaces that will add back to the street when we get rid of the curb cuts.
The capacity, can I jump in?
Yeah, I'm done.
The the capacity that you're referring to on the street neglects to reflect that the street pocket parking there is just a total nightmare. You have altered, you have two hour parking on every block around, in every direction. The parking study that you're talking about, your own neglects to consider any of the other projects that are up for or including the one seventeen seventy six, Sixth Avenue, that will add a hundred more cars to the street. So yeah, I'm looking at your project and you're going to be pouring forty plus cars onto the street for parking. And I don't, I think that when you point to your study and say there's surplus parking of standard spots, they're not standard at all. Standard means you could park there and stay there. There are spots you can stay there for two hours and then you've got to move it. There are spots where you can't park there on alternate sides during the business week between four and six AM. So you get up three thirty to move your car. So that's not standard spots. I I'm kind of looking at the parking plan saying it should give you more concern than it's given. And with your offsite lot, which has the prospect of having, I don't know, forty some odd more spaces. We don't have any sense of whether they can be dedicated to this building. Who's going to use them? How can they be shared? So so when people write their letters and parking is at the top of it, saying parking is a nightmare, I believe it. And I think it's only going to get worse unless we think it through. Because we're going to have a hundred more from seventeen seventy six. And we're going to have the city station north people arriving. And we're going to have people from the atrium building arriving. The city needs to think more. And I think you need to think in your parking plan more globally. What's the impact with everything going on in the city? Because we want to, and I think your project has a lot to say for it. But I think the neighbors are have a legitimate concern that that the impact on how they live, their parking, where they're going to put their car is being minimized, not addressed adequately.
So a couple of things in that. One, we agree. It's look, we're not taking this lightly. We spent a lot of time looking at this. And again, you don't want to compromise the rentability of our units either. We are, so a couple of things. One is there is no parking requirement under the zoning. And and I don't, you know, that is, and that's in the new zoning and that alter from the old zoning. I think there's a major focus of the comprehensive.
Can I just, I just want to address that. We're charged with analyzing whether a particular project meets the places and undue burden on public infrastructure, including on street parking.
But I think that is agreed.
So it doesn't give you a number, but we have to look at what you're talking about to decide, is this is this gonna really make life awful for people? And you know that they're fired up this. I'm, I haven't been here for years, but I've been here long enough to see that some projects really affect people emotionally because they're concerned about how it's going to affect the quality of their life. And with all the positives of what you're doing, those concerns are still real and those concerns about little things like where do we put this car? And I know you think, and maybe it's true that forty percent of your your micro occupants aren't going to have cars. And maybe that, maybe that's the future, but it's also a huge risk. There, at the other side of it, you could have seventy one units with cars, adding it to the hundred that are going to come down from seventeen seventy six. What is going to be just awful for living there? And that's not planning. That's just like closing your eyes to the broader issues. So.
Sure. But I I think, you know, there's, there's a inherent conflict that there thinks unfortunately here between what we fear and what reality is. And, you know, when you visit, excuse me, please let the applicants speak. When, you know, obviously the comprehensive plan, which was a community document, you know, looks to prioritize transit oriented walkability, you know, micro mobility. So I think Bill, we take your point to heart, we really have. But that's why we've invested as much as we have in the relationship with CDTA. I know John Trezor was here from CDTA and unfortunately had to leave. But you know, we provide free universal access passes to all of our residents. We encourage the use of transit. The bus BRT on with the blue line, which, you know, runs just a block and a half, two blocks away from Federal Station is the second highest ridership in the system. But it's only two years old. There is a transition. We live in a more tech enabled society. We don't have to go out and go to the grocery store anymore because we can have them ordered. Our building accommodates that by providing for refrigeration in our package room. There is, rideshare is ubiquitous. I know Vic Christopher is here, led led the charge on bringing rideshare to upstate. We are working with CDTA to locate a car share vehicle on Sixth Avenue and continue to bring that program along. So people no longer have to rely on car ownership. And we can't ignore the fact that cars are becoming economically out of reach. And for the folks who will live in our building, you know, where we're targeting, you know, a young professional, a moderate income, what they call the missing middle, high demand, you know, high demand folks for our employers. Frankly, car ownership is out of reach, not to mention price of fuel and other things. So I don't think that we're taking this lightly. In fact, I think that we're being quite thoughtful about our approach to how we achieve the bigger goals of the city, how we create a more sustainable project, how we wean ourselves off of our auto centricity. And at the same time, yes, we have a satellite light that we control, which we can use as a buffer to absorb the transition. But our belief is we won't need that in perpetuity. We also have a parking garage that has ninety to one hundred twenty spaces, according to the city, available during the day. So we need more municipal parking infrastructure. We agree on that. We have already been in touch with the city to talk about the two hour restriction. You know, I don't know that anybody else is, but we are trying to lead the charge and be good neighbors and have that conversation and see, can we change that? Can we improve that situation?
I I don't know that having those talks doesn't really relieve the the risk that you're going to be imposing and undue burn, especially if we take the second building that's on for tonight and say you're going to add a hundred people more to the very same blocks that you're all going to be competing for. It it just, it seems like we, maybe we need a broader answer beyond one project at a time. But this is, this is an issue that I I can understand why people would be up in arms about because they have to, they have to live there. And maybe they don't all have cars. And maybe the future will be better without cars. But they have them now. And part of your demographic are people might be in my age group. And as much as I don't want to have a car, I'm not, I I think that I'd have one because I'd want to escape. But I don't need it. You know, I I also have read in the letters that some people say no one's going to take advantage of your lot two blocks away. I think that's wrong. I think that people in that demographic don't need the car all the time. And they'll just want a place to park it that's safe, out of sight, but is there and I can get it to go away. So.
Right. And and respectfully.
I would just like to see, I I worry about the adequacy of your parking study.
No, and and respectfully, I I, you know, we, you know, the the of the forty seven housing units that are directly across the street from us, I don't believe any actually provide parking. We're providing a parking solution. You know, we're leaning into that. We we are addressing it. So the the problem is, you know, the condition is what kind of city do we want? You know, I think, you know, there are a fair amount of, well, I would say that, you know, we conflict, there are, again, it's a lot of conflicts here, you know, do we want more rooftops in downtown Troy? Yes, we do. Why? Because the businesses rely on them, because the employers rely on them. Quality of life is not a block by block issue. It is a city issue. And what our project does is it brings new households into the city that are going to spend two point three million dollars, generate two point three million dollars of additional spending in downtown Troy. That's a lot of, of, you know, money and money into the public till as well that can help to push our need to develop more parking infrastructure, if in fact, you know, that's what we need. Again, we believe that we are moving away from that demand for parking infrastructure. We see it in other cities. You know, I think there's a difference between being able to find a spot in your neighborhood and being able to find a spot consistently in front of your front door. The latter may get harder, but the former, we believe, is eminently possible with our project based on the capacity, which we're by no means going to expend with our project. So there is additional capacity. You know, I can't speak for the plans of the other developers, but I do think that we've tried to address all of these sometimes conflicting needs to arrive at a project that does the greatest public good.
I would just like to say that I agree with Will. I'm sorry. I think what the future holds is not what's on the street today. And I think you're overlooking that. But, you know, you don't have to go through it all again. I hear you and I wish there were less cars and I wish, you know, nobody had to fight over parking, but they do. And.
Again, I think we're taking, you know, we're, we're getting, you know, we're getting, it was ten, you know, letters from, from ten residents who have a number of issues. We also have letters of support from residents who live on Fifth, who have no problem. They have not exercised or expressed any concern about the parking conditions. So I think I think we run a, a, oh.
We, we can share those letters.
Excuse me. Have a chance to speak as part of my work record. It is not a battle between the audience and the applicant right now.
And and actually, I think some of those records are on file with you. I think it's important to note some of the letters that we have submitted. I know you have at least sixteen letters of support from employers, from residents on the street. And, you know, they have not expressed concern about the parking per se. We know it's a challenge. I think the, I think what we are trying to do is we come up with a thoughtful plan to try to address it. I I don't want to minimize it. That is, that is not what I'm standing here doing. We have been really thinking about this and we took a risk. We took a risk of not building structured parking on the site, which would have. Have us raise the building a another story, again, we run into. A conflict there, right? Because I know that we're also hearing that our building is too tall, regardless of, you know, that we feel that. You know, the historic preservationists and and, you know, general, uh. Uh, you know, the general feedback overall has been that's exactly the right proportion rhythm for for the street, so. Again, I think, you know, I I. I applaud you for taking this up, I think it's important, and you're doing your duties as the planning board, I hope that you see that we provided. Solutions and a pathway, and that there is a totality to this project, and and I have a very hard time believing that. You know, the world will end when this project goes up, um, you see many other municipalities that are far less parked than ours have great, great success. And the reason that they are successful is because they have people living in them, and those people are out on the street spending money. And that is, so they figure out a way around the parking issue, if there is one. But the the city thrives and continues to develop, and I would hate to think that this is what's going to arrest, you know, the the revitalization that. We've seen in Troy for the last couple of years, um, not to mention, we're hardly past the tipping point here. We have had two retailers in our building alone go dark in the last six months for lack of traffic. That should be a concern, that should be a concern when our tax base is eroded, and we don't have people able to support businesses. So I I put that out again, not to minimize, but to say, I think we are aggressively trying to tackle those concerns.
I briefly wanted to just echo it and comment or respond to or counter comment you made, you you. You said to build fear versus reality, and I think that could be easily reversed as your hope versus reality. You know, there's a fear of what the parking demands might be versus the reality of it, and I think our point is we have a hope for what. What the offset or mitigation might work with, and this is based on observation of conditions on the street at different times, day, night, weekends. So it's not based on a hope and a prayer, in our case, it's actually based on observing the traffic utilization, and. That's what, you know, that's what we engage with Bowler to do, and you know, that's reflected in CDT, so. Respectfully, it's it's not a question of us not doing or working collecting the data. And likewise, respectfully, it is a hope to assume that all those tenants won't be contributing cars, that is not something you could observe right now.
Uh, totally, you are absolutely right, I I cannot dispute that, I can only say though, that. The difference is we've done analysis, we we've put together uh, multiple studies, we've studied the demographics, we look at our own. You know, we we probably own and operate more units than than any of the other folks you who have written in against the project, we've looked at those trends. Um, so what we're doing, it is based on analysis and projection, we're not just doing it simply on a fear that there won't be. And we haven't seen hard data that refutes.
Thanks, um, so we do still have public hearing set for today, um. Yeah, no problem, I just wanted to remind us that we have public hearing to go through. Um, and then after public hearing is closed, for further comment, um, if commissioners are in favor, I'd move to open public hearing. Okay.
Uh, I just had a question, and this wasn't discussed last month, I wasn't, I wasn't here.
Correct, yeah, it wasn't on the agenda.
Is there a elevation for the rear, or is there?
There is, that we submitted, yeah.
Trying to find that.
More quick while you're looking to.
You can share that too.
That'd be great.
Yeah, I did find it, um, it is page fifty two of fifty five.
Oh, maybe that's why I didn't. Quite get, get through the news stories. Um, while we're all scrolling, I would just add that, you know, I I hear. Bill's point, and I think there is a parking issue, parking management issue in downtown Troy. But I mean, if you look at a satellite image and zoom out, it's like, there's an obscene amount of of asphalt, you know, it's, and and two hour parking is. Is is pretty silly, and, um, you know, putting that on the applicant, I think is is unfair. Um, yeah.
Yeah, and I I could go, I could go into the U T O, but I think.
I think at our main meeting, we could discuss whether the applicant of the neighborhood wants to petition the city to change the parking restrictions on Fifth Avenue, neighboring streets, which. Is outside the purview of this application.
Right.
It's approval, but it doesn't seem like it would make sense, so certainly something that I think. Could still alleviate the problem that people are complaining of.
And Andrew, we took that to heart, we've started that process, thank you.
Okay, so if, if I will, um, motion to uh, open the floor for public comment.
I move that we open the public comment.
Okay, then I'll say that motion on favor. I, I, okay, so, um, we have anyone that's come to speak about this proposal? Up to, uh, give your comments, please start as soon as we. Address for the record, who's trying to comments to three minutes or less.
Vic Christopher, twelve Second Street, I'm originally from Brooklyn, like Commissioner Suzanne Spelling, I mean, come on, parking. Where did we grow up? We look at the growth of Brooklyn, look at the success, look at the track record of Troy. I know, but you know, the stuff that Jeff is talking about is real and it's happening, and young people don't want cars or have cars. Bottom line, and, uh, you know, Jeff Rosenblum, thank you for the contributions to the downtown. A hundred forty plus million dollars worth of developments with the Visina project. And then he was building, hit every mark possible. Of all the things that we care about here in this room. Let's give the guy a little respect here, I'm surprised that we have to, we have to come and do this again, and this is now, I believe, the third meeting that this project is being discussed. It's, it feels a little childish to me at times, um, the setback. The streetscape, this is urban one oh one, you guys all studied this in college. We don't want setbacks, we want to fill in the missing teeth of the streets, I know that. And the community did participate in the endless charrette. And, you know, for years I heard about, we don't have a comprehensive study. Uh, how could Troy not have a master plan? I heard this, I heard this for the first decade that I was here. And so then everybody gets together and the community contributes, and they spend endless hours sitting around talking about all the things. That we hold near and dear on hearts, we come up with the comprehensive plan. And then on the floor in a room like this, a guy like that has to negotiate the height of a building and a rooftop deck. When it fits into the comprehensive plan that you all contributed to. And the city taxpayers spent five, seven million dollars on a, on a coffee table book that we don't really respect either. Um. I just really want to move this city forward with all of you, we have to grow this city, and there's only one way to do it, and that's to put buildings in it. And, you know, it's nice to park in front of your apartment, I don't really have that luxury. And it's, i- i- it's it's a business district as much as it's a neighborhood, and it's just a balance that we'll have to take. But if we want to grow this city, if you want to make a move, you're going to have to break and make occasional, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chris.
Evening to the commission, I'm the aforementioned John Scherzer from C D A, I'm actually still here, so. Uh, this is my second time, and, uh, you know, obviously, we're not going to have an opinion on some of the aesthetics that were talked about here today, but there is no denying and no doubt to the fact that. Rosenbloom and our relationship is by far and away the largest many developer in the capital region, you can obviously see from the way they're building a building. Um, and the elements and the detail that it's gone through that, uh, that change is occurring, a certain respect the commissions take here on future versus present. Uh, but think about the a micro unit, there's no limit to a micro unit, somebody who probably doesn't have enough access capital to a car. But that said, Mr. Morel spoke about our relationship with the other partners that they have, universal access, provide bike services. Plus rapid transit service, a variety of other things, so I think in line with where the city wants to be. Um, we're just proud to be partners with this, think that obviously there are some things that worked out between everybody. But the project itself seems to address a lot of the things that the city is looking for, and I can say from C D T A's perspective, as we have our. Uh, depot down at Who's Extreme, maybe you probably know by now.
Very good. Now, James here had a question.
I mean, I've been Googling the answer, but universal access, anybody can take the the buck, like, can you just explain what that?
Yeah, so the, so the program is called universal access, where we've done with a lot of partners, we've got over thirty now, and Rosenbloom is probably one of. Two or three that are developers, what happens with the program is, we agree on a contracted price for discounted access to C D T A's root network. Some of the locations also include the bike program, C D P H P cycle in that program as well. So those benefits are afforded to tenants, so if you move in as a tenant, you're immediately asked, would you like to participate in this program? If you'd like to participate in the program, they're provided a navigator card, uh, that has basically about a year on it, because our relationships run year to year. And then if there is a bicycle components, these relationships, which we are trying to get completed with Rosa Bloom. There's a percent discount that's offered, so people can rent the C D P H P cycle bike. Let's say it's, you know, the general public gets a ten cents, they'll probably get a discounted rate on that. Uh, I'd also like to add that that Rosenbloom is working with us on the installation and update of an electric charging station, what's the address? So right, right outside the news, there was an electric car share vehicle there before, it was a BMW, we're now taking that over, the program's been running for about seven months. We're looking to expand once we can get our hands on some more vehicles, and, um, they're going to be working with that as well, so you can see the pattern of that. But the idea is that eventually even a resident would have the opportunity to rent an electric car as well, um, so.
Through that same card.
Pardon me?
Through that same.
Same type of program, yeah, they're all different tentacles of that program.
And you said something about opting in, is there any, is that just included in their rent, or is that a better question for Jeff?
Yes, Jeff, but they, we offer it to Rose and Moon to determine how they want to best deploy it, and the relationships that we've built so far, we've seen in the news. They've deployed it at check-in at Rentfield, would you like this pass? Obviously, if somebody says they're not interested, I don't think they're going to push it on them, but that opportunity is.
Thanks.
Well said. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, again, we're in public comments, so if you're here to speak about the proposal, please come up. Um, state your name and address, and try to keep your comments to a few minutes or less, please.
Hi, my name is Silva Menard, and I live on the twenty one hundred block of Fifth Ave. And I'm here in support of the eighteen eighteen Fifth Ave development. In Troy, we have seen how infilling and increasing residential capacity can be controversial in urban neighborhoods that have experienced loss of teeth through passive and active demolition. And there's been this new zoning and comprehensive plan. Based around beneficial livable urban design, and I'm surprised that, I'm not sure everybody in this room believes in that new zoning and plan. Um, and I want to respect the impact that good development has on neighborhoods. And that our city really needs more people and more housing, it really, really needs more housing. Um, historically, this block has had significant housing density on both east and west sides, as far as I can tell. And that evidence is there that healthy urban neighborhoods infill empty teeth. They eliminate some of these parking lots where buildings have been demolished and have been paved over. And when we add that increased housing minimal setback, restoring residents on the east side of this block is a natural step to continuing this. Um, and I just want to say, I, living on the twenty one hundred block, we've dealt with other developers. And their attitude towards Troy is radically different from the Rosenbloom development. Um, and I would consider, you know, when our, our neighborhood was discussing. But we would actually be much less opposed to a development like developer like Rosenbloom than we would to the one that we are stuck with. Um, I've seen that the developers for Rosenbloom have done things differently, they've highlighted visual fit. With Troy architecture and aesthetics, they're not cookie cutter, the, um. The level of build has been higher than a lot of those projects that you see in front of you over the last couple of years. Um, they're considering long term concerns like apartment livability and layout, emissions, geothermal heating, electric vehicle charging. Uh, I was on one meeting and they're like, and another developer said, no, we don't need E Vs, we don't need charging. And and then the proximity to C D T A stops and really developing that C D T A partnership. And I'm happy to see that it's market rate housing versus luxury apartments that is a missing. Um, place, and I know that concerns are going to come up regarding being an apartment count. But I support the infill, the increased neighborhood density, adding those market rate apartments. And the zoning plan requires zero parking, increased density, but nobody still believes in that. And I disagree with the opposition to the building parking contingency that they have. Moving away from cars is not as far in the future as we think it is. My family of four has been a single car family since twenty nineteen. I have spoken with more and more people moving to the city, living in the city, who have one or fewer vehicles as a family. I know multiple single people, including tenants of ours, who have moved to Troy without vehicles in the last six months.
Just over three minutes.
They moved here because it works, they want to live here and have not purchased a car, even moving out of New York City, thank you.
Thank you, sorry to interrupt.
I love how these people who don't live in our neighborhood are telling you what they want to see in our neighborhood. And how wonderful it is to fill in spaces that are empty. But we have an empty space across from my house and across from our house. We are not saying, don't fill it in, we are asking, and we have asked. Rosenbloom many times to compromise with us, and they refuse to do so. So we have asked, put your building there, make it three stories. Which will match what was there before historically. And set it back the twenty five feet that the historic ground stones that were torn down. Had that setback setback. Make it look like and feel like the rest of our neighborhood. Do not have seventy one apartments, it's going to put a lot of, a lot of pressure on our infrastructure. To say nothing of the parking, and I'm not saying anything about the parking, there's a lot has been said about that. I'm talking about sewers, sewers have backed up since the news went online. Well, many of our people in our neighborhood have had sewer issues that they have had to repair with their own money. Besides the money, there's a lot of distress involved, as you can imagine. Okay, so we're asking, compromise with us. Rosenbloom says, no, the numbers don't work for us, well, what are your numbers? You people have asked them to see the numbers, they're not showing them to you. Maybe besides getting the one million dollar Nicert grant, the two point six million dollar Restore New York grant. That has been promised by the city. Um. Maybe their numbers could work, they'll obviously get a pilot. Program, so, you know, in no time at all, these guys are going to have their money back, especially, you know, with seventy one apartments at a thousand dollars plus a piece a month. Um, they're going to get their money back in a short period of time, and compromising with us. To do a smaller project with fifty. Um, instead of seventy one apartments would certainly. Would certainly keep us happy. Right now, what they're proposing is going to be a looming building, it will come to the front sidewalk, it will be four stories high, and it will. Be in our face. And here's another thing I want to say, those ground stones were torn down. With great protest by the people who live in the houses we now protect.
Just over three minutes.
Well, sorry, but, um, and. That was the beginning of the New York, of the National Historic Register, people were so outraged, those buildings were torn down. That the National Historic Register was begun because of that. I feel like we're channeling the people who were here before, who saved. Troy from making the huge mistake of turning the whole downtown into a, into a mall, okay? Mistakes have been made, I have lived here eighty four years, I have seen mistakes made. Let's not keep making them, let's look at. Let's not keep making them. Let's look at, let's look at reasonable development. I know you're all, you're all people who are committed to Troy's history and to Troy's future. So let's, what's our hurry? Let's look at reasonable development. Let's look at reasonable compromise with the people who live in the neighborhood, who have to be there facing that building for the rest of their lives. Certainly the rest of my life. So listen to us. Please represent the people who live here, who care about our neighborhood, who care about our city. You are charged with representing the people, and please make the right decisions. Thank you. I think everybody knows me. I'm Jerry DeSav. I live at eighteen thirty-three Fifth Avenue in downtown Troy.
Thank you.
Been here for eighty-four years. By the way, I don't think parking is free for the, the residents. I know you do. Parking isn't free, and I don't think the bus passes are either.
Hi, Jim DeSav. I live at two seventy-six Tenth Street. Take that off. I live at two seventy-six Tenth Street. I grew up in eighteen thirty-three Fifth Avenue, which is immediately across the other way. That's my mom. I, just to pick up quickly on what my mom was alluding to at the end. Rosenbloom will be providing a certain number of spaces. These are not free spaces. These are paid spaces. Today I went and I saw a guy coming out of Vagina. I said, hey, how you doing? I'd talk to you. And he said he pays sixteen hundred dollars a month for a one bedroom. And I said, what about parking? Do you get parking? He's like, no, no, I don't do parking. He's like, how much is it? He's like, it's like a hundred, hundred and a quarter. So where do you park? Out on the street. So I, you know, again, I would love this vision that Jeff has been sharing, and he's a great seller. He's a nice guy, frankly. But there are concerns, real concerns now. I teach at Union College. I teach an environmental media class. And one of the things that we go over in class is externalized costs. So when you ask a developer, can you afford to do this? Can you afford to do that? Can you afford these changes? We also need to ask the residents, what are their costs? There, and of course, there's some later parking, other things that people have said. There are some specific environmental problems with the structure. Again, I love this idea. Jeff, I would love, I know I'm supposed to address you, I would love a city that is completely car-free. I've seen areas in Europe that do that. It's fantastic. I'm an avid biker. I love bicycles. I would love better bike lanes. Troy has crappy bike lanes. You die if you cross the Green Island Bridge. But this building is going to be covered in fiber cement in the back. Fiber cement, I don't know if you know, you will find all sorts of industry resources online that say it's a great environmental product. It involves cement, which is extremely energy consuming. And it incorporates as a filler fly ash from coal combustion.
Just under a minute.
This is the, this is the entire backside of the building, right? This is what we have in Vagina. This is what we have in the news. The number of appliances, everybody gets their own washer and dryer. This is an environmentally friendly building. You could have twenty machines in the basement, ten washers, ten dryers, service anyone, everybody, and fulfill the mission of intergenerational interaction, which Jeff says is an important thing for the over fifties and the under thirties. We have a hundred and forty-two individual appliances where there could be twenty. That's environmental. Everything will be, the floors will be covered in wood grain vinyl. Vinyl creates cancer belts in Florida, in Louisiana, and surprisingly in Italy. Oh, sorry, that is my husband calling me wondering why. We also have destruction of trees. There's going to be eleven trees on the site that died, including four magnificent oaks at the back. And that's going to be done for parking.
Just over three, if you could wrap up.
Sure. So sustainable lumber, that Jeff said himself, they don't know where the lumber. And of course, there's Union Street, which, if you read the thing that was sent in. So again, I would just echo what my mom said. The comprehensive plan, that's your bible, right? That's the thing you're supposed to go to in sight. And that's his respect the neighborhoods, respect the people, listen to them. And I would really ask Rosenbloom to seriously compromise and make this building respected, integrate more efficiently with the neighborhood. He is a welcome person on the block. And this idea that we're in two different camps is not true. He's a welcome person, but it needs to integrate properly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Rich Webster. I'm representing a number of residents, two of whom don't want to speak tonight, so they asked me to speak for them. So I could ask for six minutes if I can. Very much. So it was an eloquent presentation by the developer, but I think there's something fundamentally, conceptually inadequate here. What you're presented with here is a false dichotomy. It's this building or nothing. In reality, a lot of things can be done to improve this. In reality, developer says he's had dialogue with different people, but clearly he wasn't listening during some of that dialogue. Because the building has not improved. Is being presented as a fait accompli. You take this, or the future of Troy is dead. That is not the case. For the future of Troy, we need good buildings. We need well-designed buildings. We need buildings that fit the zoning. This is not one of them. Whatever Mr. Rosenbloom's eloquent presentation will tell you. For example, we talked about improving streetscapes. The problem with this building is it doesn't improve the streetscape on Union Street. There's a huge hole there. Mr. Rosenbloom said it's hard to set the building back another six feet on Fifth Avenue. But forgot to say, he's actually asked for a variance to set it back forty-two feet from Union Street. So it just seems like we're not working very creatively with this plot that we've got. If we could, if we could make the floor area of the building bigger by going back to Union Street in accordance with zoning, then there'd be a lot more room to play with in terms of floor area, structured parking, number of stories, number of units, et cetera. I might say that at the zoning board, there was no evidence presented whatsoever why you can't make this building compliant. There was no account taken of the fact that when the building footprint would be bigger, you'd have bigger floor plates, and so therefore you can get more floor area in less stories. So then we heard about the detailed transport management plan. The problem is, with regard to parking, the transport management plan just says that an affiliate of the developer owns some parking. Doesn't tell you anything more than that, right? Well, that's nice. But will they dedicate it for this development? Will it be, is there capacity there already? None of that is in the transport management plan. Similarly, on secret review, there's an assertion that this project will not significantly affect traffic. But although there's a very opaque estimate of how much traffic might be generated, there's no estimate what the current traffic is. So, you know, if you don't know what the current traffic is, how do you know that the trips that you're developing, you're, you're generating don't significantly affect traffic? Similarly, Mr. Rosenbloom talked about a productive discussion, Mr. Waite. Well, Mr. Waite at the Historic Review Commission had some very specific recommendations, which the Historic Review Commission accepted and said, and recommended to you that you adopt. And specifically, they said, Mr. Waite said that the building should be set back twenty-five feet from the curb to align with the historic buildings. Mr. Rosenbloom said, well, that's not possible within the zoning. Well, according to my calculations, it is. Mr. Rosenbloom said the current building is set back four feet. Or is it like nineteen feet? Oh, well, maybe, maybe my calculations aren't good, but what I'm, what I'm trying to say is you can set this building back a little more on Fifth Avenue and then go out on the Union Street side and redevelop and incorporate the park in the middle, and you have a lot more play here, and you'll be able to much better develop. I suggest, you know, if they, if that parking isn't already occupied that they already own, maybe they could set aside some of it. That might be a good idea, but they haven't said anything about.
Just over four minutes.
Okay. Now, you know, let me just remind you that the zoning, the requirement of zoning is to preserve historic architectural scale and character. This building is bigger than anything in the area. It's bigger than the historic buildings. As we've heard from Mr. Waite at the Historic Review Commission, the materials are not in keeping with what was used in the past, and in fact, are similar to ones that are currently decaying on facades of developers existing. Mr. Waite recommended natural materials for those facades, and I think you should take that recommendation seriously. So this developer is getting a two point six million dollar grant to improve Troy. But it's missing a huge opportunity to maximize the benefit of this development. And again, my clients are not opposed to develop. They want to optimize this development so it works for them, and it works for Troy. Everybody wants, you know, more businesses, more people, a more vibrant downtown. Those are all great aims. These people live downtown. They like downtown. These are not sort of bloodites from the suburbs who don't like downtown. They actually live there. They have been living there, as Mr. Mr. Sev said, for eighty-four years. So I think they know something about downtown. But they also know something about what parking's like now, what parking would be like in the future. Let me just say, on the, on the issue of parking, I use the numbers that the developer themselves gave for their other developments. And using their assumptions, it comes to you will have a need for fifty parking places. And that's pretty, I mean, that's a minimalistic type of estimate. But nonetheless, you know, there's nowhere near this, at most seventeen at the moment. So there's going to be a huge gap.
So six minutes now.
All right, let me just finish off. As I wrote your letter detailing most of these things. There's a fire safety issue, which I think is important, but I think it's only, but I think it seems like there's something needs to be done there. And finally, you know, there's the idea of affordability. The idea that people that live in this, this building would be somehow low income, or we're talking about a thousand dollars a month for a micro studio. The existing average for a normal studio in Troy is nine seventy-five. So this is not going to add affordable housing to Troy. This is a, a market rate housing. It's testing the market for micro units. And, you know, it's, it's, it's a risky proposition at the best of times, but thank you. Through good design, you can make it less risky by actually requiring some sensible improvements. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Brian Bucker. I'm speaking as, under pastors of Victorious Life Christian Church. We are the neighbor directly adjacent to this project to the north. We've been downtown Troy Church for the last forty years, serving the community. And we do lend our support to this project fully and completely. Troy needs more residents. And we feel that this development will help attract young professionals and help steady my business and enhance the neighborhood. Our historic church buildings directly north, as I mentioned, we feel that the palette of materials, the height, the proportions fit well within the block. We think actually when we want a contemporary approach to the detailing of the bay wing, the most prominent facade are welcome. And we hope that the planning board will resist costs for any fall historic elements. And, and also review that final material palette. But we do feel that the building needs to be authentic to itself. We're not building two hundred years ago, we're building today. And just feel that the Troy needs authentic buildings and, and quality architecture, and trying to mimic the past is not the path to that. We feel this is a great project. It's an answer to our prayers for the city's prosperity and well-being. It goes through. Thanks. Thank you very much.
My name is Bruce Rubin. I live, work and have owned four fifty-six Broadway, which is right around the corner from this post project. I live there with my wife, my eleven-year-old son, my fourteen-year-old son. I feel in the strongest possible terms that this application should be denied without prejudice to reopen it because there are just too many flaws in it. As board members discussed, parking is a key issue. However, my main reasons are this. First of all, putting a seventy-one apartment unit on a point five five acres, which is a price rate one hundred feet by two hundred feet, is completely out of balance. It's like putting an elephant in a chicken coop. It's just ridiculous. Putting, allowing for fourteen or fifteen parking spots for, for this is also ridiculous. I'm an attorney. People come to see me. My neighbor cuts hair. She needs spots, and there will be an overflow. With respect to them talking to neighbors and whatnot, my great neighbor Jerry, she's kinder than I am. They would, she would say, well, maybe put fifty apartments in this one hundred by two hundred feet unit. It's, it's just, it's their, it's their way, because they say it's their way. Compromise should be done. I also was at the historic review board, and they did talk about twenty-five foot offset historically, and it's more appropriate for the skyline, et cetera. That was not mentioned here at all today. The prior meeting we had, we had a, the president from the Troy Firefighters Union. He said he recommended a moratorium of all buildings because they don't have the personnel to handle them. This is new material. If there's a fire, what's going to happen? Do we have any material safety data sheets? I was also at that historical meeting, and they, they mentioned about the offset. I looked at the blueprints. There's nothing about twenty-five feet. I, I realize that they say X number of million dollars is going to be put into the economy. How much is that for the rent of one thousand plus a month? Seventy thousand dollars a month will generate income, but it's all going to the landlord. They say, well, we're taking a risk. The landlord is taking a risk. What about the community? I mean, what's going to be done today will truly affect us now. But what's going to be done today with respect to this neighborhood will affect my children, my grandchildren, up into a century or more away. And I think this is just, it's just too much economics for them. If it takes them.
Just over three minutes.
If it takes them seven years or ten years to recover the cost, so be it. But you're talking about the community, and just because the zoning laws do not say you have to have Wall Street parking, doesn't mean it's proper. I respectfully ask that this application be denied without prejudice. They should go back to the drawing board and meet with us and maybe discuss it. Seventy-one apartments with fifteen parking units is absolutely ridiculous.
You're being repetitive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
Good lord. I'm Terrance Strum. I live at eighteen thirteen Fifth Avenue and like, my neighbor, I both live and operate my business in my building. I won't reiterate all the points on parking and all of that nonsense. You get the point, right? But I guess my biggest concern is strain to infrastructure. The poster child of the worst problems with the sewer city issue or city of sewer issues. And I know that this building, you know, that's not anything to do with what their design is, but I am concerned about all of the developments happening in my neighborhood and with impact that will have to the overall infrastructure and services available. I don't know what power the planning commission has, but whatever power you have, I ask that you exercise it. Thank you so much for your time.
Hi, my name is Mary Kresenfelski.
Also known as Rishba.
I've had my hair.
I've had my hair salon in downtown Troy for 39 years, this November 2nd. I've owned the building that I currently practice at for the last 20, it'll be 24 years. Um, I have six practitioners in my salon, uh, two practice massage, one does Reiki. The other one does facials and there's two hairdressers. This is going to greatly affect their livelihood. I'm on my way out with my age. I'm, I'm working part-time. But this is going to affect their livelihood because right now two of the massage therapists do not take appointments on Saturdays because their clients don't know where to park. Because we have a wonderful farmer's market that is wonderful and that's, that's an asset to downtown. But this parking, this additional parking is going to greatly impact. And when those people, my people that rent from me can't make a living there, they're going to leave. They're going to leave. And will anyone else come in their place? Probably not because of parking. Parking is a challenge now.
I understand the parking.
Yeah, I know. I know. I'm repeating myself. And sewer gas is another issue. We have very bad sewer gas in all of our buildings. You can contact Suzie Carrick at Caddies. I have sewer gas. Bruce Rubin has sewer great, great gas as well as the residents on Fifth Avenue. This is too many apartments. I'm not an engineer of interest structure, but think about the sewer and the overflow and all the other earth hurting things that could happen. Again, do, does every apartment need a wash or a dryer? I beg to differ. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Some person for public comment?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Renee Panada, recycling coordinator for the city of Troy. And I've come to speak about deconstruction, which is something that we spoke to Jeff about some months ago and something that we are looking to investigate as a city. Jeff is willing to work with us to promote that, which I think speaks to his efforts and Rosenblum's efforts to do the right thing environmentally. Um, so while we have not yet succeeded in securing someone who is able to come to the area, Jeff has expressed continued interest in us doing so and will work with us if the ability arises to be able to deconstruct the building. That is a process of disassembling it. Instead of landfilling it, it means rather than demolishing it, the materials are reused for another purpose. So I just wanted to speak to that fact. If you have any questions at all, please feel free.
Is this the existing structure or, or the proposed structure?
So that would be the existing structure. So I can't speak to the new structure, nor will I. Um, that's not my area of expertise, but with anything having to do with the existing structure, there has been an initial assessment done. Um, primarily companies that are out of state. There are some New York state challenges we're trying to work through currently with a national expert. And again, Jeff has been very willing to wait patiently as that's something that we're working on. Um, that would provide us a model going forward with other buildings throughout the city, hopefully throughout the state. That's something we're participating on a statewide level. Any other questions I can answer? Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello there. Um, my name is Charlotte Guyton and I live at 69 Albany Avenue in Green Island. Um, I am deeply uncomfortable with public speaking, but I'm here because I'm very passionate about this project. I'm here to speak in favor of 1818 Fifth Avenue. Less important to where I live is the business that I own. I own Bard and Baker Board Game Cafe in downtown Troy. Um, located in the ground floor of the news apartments at 501 Broadway. I moved to Troy in 2013. So I've been here for about 10 years, not as long as most, but I fell deeply in love with Troy enough to want to open a, a business down here. Um, and we've been open for about five years now. During this time, I've employed a number of people. Right now, my employee count is 11, many of which who drive their cars to work, park for four to eight hour shifts. Um, but I also have employees who do rely on Uber ride sharing and some that take the bus as well. I have, over the past couple of years, had the wonderful opportunity of getting to know the RPI student community. Uh, board games definitely attract students for sure. Um, and the amount of students that I have spoken to over the years who have gone on to graduate and want to stay in the area, but have had difficulty finding housing, um, has been surprising to me. Um, because it's always been, you know, if you, if you want to live somewhere, you'll find somewhere to live. Um, but my employees have also had difficulty when their leases ending, finding places to live, um, which has affected where they have ended up staying as well. Um, for the parking, um, I spend 12 to 14 hours at my business, um, every single day. I have big windows. I can see Fifth Avenue and Broadway and there's oftentimes just so much ample parking. My employees don't have trouble parking. Again, that's only 11 people and I'm not trying to minimize that, but I think if there is any um, indication of how uh, 70, you know, one potential additional cars in downtown Troy would affect it on that block, it would be the farmer's market, which right now, um, as of uh, I believe it was this year or last year, they increased the amount of streets that they took over, which then pushes the parking even further back down Broadway, Fifth Avenue, Sixth Avenue. Um, and we have seen that, but we still see people finding ample places to park. My employees, guests, uh, then people in the news apartments, et cetera. What I most want to speak to though is that I feel very positive about this project because my, I can't speak to everyone's experience, but mine, um, renting from the Rosenblum companies for the past five years has been integral to operating my business. I met with multiple landlords in downtown Troy prior to deciding on where to open Bard and Baker and there were so many people that were not as thoughtful about sustainability, environmental impact, um, employing um, thoughtful individuals, um, who, who I've had the pleasure of working with for multiple years and also thoughtfully filling their commercial tenants with largely women owned businesses.
Just three and a half minutes.
Absolutely. I will, um, I just want to say that I have had an absolute pleasure renting from them and I trust the, the thoughtful process. It seems that they are hearing people's concerns and addressing them to the best of their ability. Um, and if anyone can reach out to me at any point in time. Thank you.
Hi there. It's been a while.
Hello.
Marie Gabazi, 1922 Fifth Avenue. I'm on the block north on Fifth from where the project is proposed. I'm here today because I think this will be a beneficial project for Troy. Uh, I'm speaking in favor. I believe that we need infill in those two, those gaps that we have, which this will provide. I think it'll replace an inappropriate suburban building. I really hate to see those. Um, I, I'm a little confused by people expressing concern with parking when it's allowed and the policy that was implemented in the zoning that it seems to me that the objection may be to the zoning versus this particular project. I think this, the size that's proposed of the units is appropriate for someone who wants to reduce costs, but does not want to have roommates. I myself have lived in smaller units over my lifetime. And yet may want to have more upscale amenities. I think that we're lucky to have Rosenblum as a developer in our neighborhood. Jeff, I've served with Jeff on the VIN board for a number of years. He's currently the vice president. I think for developer, they're extremely involved in the community and I've appreciated their contribution. So these are all aspects of why I think this project should be approved. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the planning commission. My name is Jeff Betts. Um, Dylan's listening. So for the record, I'm accusing myself of this project as chair of the Troy IDA CRC and LBC. Residents, 2100 Verdatta, 210th Street, the Keenan Building on Broadway, 140, uh, 166 Fourth Street. I don't even remember on first Ave, what's that? All these buildings. Lived downtown a lot. Now I own a residence 592 Third Ave. I spent six years after school going for five year professional architecture degree, working in material science and technology with innovative testing sustainable materials. Did Jeff Rosenblum, did some projects with them for acoustic materials, um, well versed in resiliency, building materials. Went on to high performance European penetration, windows and doors, incorporating triple blazing and doing energy studies and modeling systems. I've now been spending since 2016, a lot of my time dedicated to passive house. Whether you go the FIAS route as Rosenblum is, or you go the fee route, pass class in student Germany. I'm an advocate of both. Um, I serve on the Empire State. But besides that, I have a lot of experience. I've been called in for my professional experience as a certified passive house tradesperson, you know, certified passive house builder on numerous projects. This project was awarded the, I started round three building of excellence board and as we all know, they got a million dollars for this.
You're far through your time.
As I've been watching these projects progress and tracking them, I think the last meeting I spoke at, there were 16 projects, 11 of them going the passive route. Remainder, we're probably doing Energy Star, which is a subpart thing. Notice that lead is not one of these. Lead is, is at this point, it's now that we have passive, I would throw it in greenwashing. Lead was advanced. I wouldn't have said that, but we can do better now. There's two projects that have come forward. The Finney project with Energy Star and Rosenblum's project. As I've watched these other projects from round three rest, I see this one continuously be brought up and help because of things like parking and because of neighbor concerns that affect property values or something. I don't, I, I, it's nimbyism at its finest. And um, I find that as we watch this progress and a new $10 million round is announced, are we discouraging developers from coming to Troy by halting this and slowing it down? Have we seen new applicants come forward for this? Will they? When they ask around, when they see which municipalities are, are progressive enough to accept this? Because every one of those projects is in neighborhoods, every single one where they've affected parking and where neighbors are affected by them. And those cities might get two projects or three. And here we are still discussing our first. Look at the temperatures, look at the smog, look at the issues, look how fast this is all happening. We have to encourage the development, these projects. We have to approve them so that the state can see that they're valuable. The governor, lover or hater, has set aside a goal with billions of dollars or 2 million homes to be carbon neutral. You can define that in a number of ways. You can come up with a lot of slick ways to do that. You can't, you can't do this in a slick brainwashing way with FIAS or fee. They're making the right decisions and I'm watching on the IDA board and a number of projects that come through and none of them have these considerations and it's scary. Because we're running out of property that we can do sustainable building on. We need to move this forward and sew it as an
This, this
I don't care. It's not nimbyism. It is
Excuse me. This is not a debate. This is not an opportunity for you to agree instead. Or we can stay. We are not getting another thought. I want to continue speaking. I am not debating the group about this. I'm sorry, but it is too close.
Hi, everybody. Um, Zach Cole, I'm with Rosenblum. We got a late entry letter of support. I was hoping I could read it at this point. Does that work?
Sure.
Okay. Um, so this is a letter of support from Julian Adams from Shipos State Distort Office of Preservation. I'm not afraid of public speaking, not great at public reading, so bear with me. So this was addressed from Julian to Jeff in support of the project. It was provided to Eric and I believe at this point, everybody should have it, but it's just, it's late. So. Um, so thank you for sharing the proposal for 1818 Fifth Avenue. I'm always interested in new developments in Troy, both as a resident and a professional in historic preservation and urban planning. By way of introduction, I've lived in the Capitol District for 35 years and have always been impressed by the historic architecture and urban form in the city of Troy. I worked as a senior manager at the New York State Historic Preservation Office for 33 years, directing reinvestment and appropriate planning and design in New York City's towns and villages. Currently, I am the director of historic preservation for an architectural firm with offices in New York State, Carolina, overseeing projects and working to develop new markets for my company. Seven years ago, I moved to 146 Second Street and have enjoyed not only the city itself, but the sense of community found here. Community can be built several ways, but a dense urban form like Troy creates ways to make that happen. The happenstance meanings of public spaces, shops, restaurants, the fact that the sidewalks are where so much social activity occurs, again by chance. The fact that people living in close proximity creates neighbors that learn to coexist since we share so such space. The days of urban renewal saw the tradition of urban form as an anathema and worked to undo so much of what we had taken decades, even centuries to create. Urban renewal removed much of Troy, both in large swaths and smaller site specific areas, including the area of 1818 Fifth Ave. What was once a range of well-built and beautiful houses on the southeastern side of the street were demolished for small suburban form structure that purposefully dismissed the traditional forms of a city. Cities have been seeing a resurgence over the past decade as both a new generation of people, as well as empty nesters discover the pleasures and of course challenges of living in a denser and space. Troy has already seen several projects that are moving in the direction and reweaving the urban fabric, not my words, but appropriate here, that was torn during the urban renewal period. Specifically to the proposal for 1818 Fifth Ave, I reviewed the plans and speaking as a professional with over 35 years of working in historic preservation or urban planning, I can't imagine it being a better fit for the street scheme. It's not common that I can say that in regards to new infill construction. It's obvious the design team was careful to look at the setting and work to be compatible, but contemporary, which should be the goal for any new construction in historic districts. Its scale, form and details will bring a sense of what was lost back to the fifth Ave without being an exact copy of the past. Adding new residential space, it will aid in supporting businesses and bringing new life to the area. I know that parking has been raised as a concern, but your study of available parking in the area appears sound and reasonable. Urban areas cannot be expected to provide parking like that in the suburbs. The efforts that tried to do that during urban renewal simply gutted out cities and created holes that have no value except for the hours of eight to five when workers drove into and out of the areas. The city needs activity, not only between the hours of eight to five. Additionally, there's a growing demographic that does not necessarily desire to have cars and depends on public transportation by simply walking. A development such as yours will potentially be attracted to that group. Again, thank you for allowing me to review your project. I look forward to it and other projects as Troy continues its growth. Julian Adams. 146 Second Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
Good evening, members of planning board. Thanks for hearing us out tonight. Um, Ed Anchor, uh, currently a tenant at 291 River Street, uh, Design Group, and we recently purchased 504 Broadway, which we are intending to do some additions and renovations to uh, for our new office spaces. Uh, as such, um, we need to attract clients and, or clients and also our, our staff, right? And our staff typically come right off the hill from RPI. And the biggest problem I have when hiring my staff is they don't have anywhere to live that they can use their sneakers. They can use their bus passes. They can use their bicycles. Quite frankly, uh, the development that Rosenblum is proposing for the, the development um, is right across the street and in our backyard. Uh, and you know, we already have, uh, are in talks to, uh, use some of the housing for some of our employees. Uh, they want to live downtown. They want to reside downtown. Very few of them have cars. Um, and so I think the demographic plays out people that we know that we're attracting to work at our office. Um, we need to fill that building with approximately 38 new bodies uh, from our office to our ground floor development to the office space we'll bring on the second floor. And what better way to attract them by telling them there's housing right next door. We're fully in support of the project and we want to see it move forward as quickly as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Someone else in person for comment? Still, somebody to come up with after we get through the Zoom. Still allow somebody to come up with, after we get through the Zoom. Just means if you could, through the Zoom function and Eric can let me know. Nobody, or is it crashed?
You guys still have the screen on your side because ours.
So it's just a HD managed. Loose cable maybe?
Yeah.
Okay, if you're on Zoom. Sorry, can you see the chat on your computer? Could you call names for me to? Ms. Man, could you please unmute and offer comment?
Okay, bye bye. I think I'm unmuted. Hi, I'm Emily Mann. I'm the downtown city council member representing District Four. And the Chair of Planning and Economic Development Committee for the council. I would like to reiterate how significant the passage of our new zoning laws, Recode Troy. Is to the development of our city and how intentional the choices were. And how long that process was open to public debate and review, including many members of the, of the, the planning and zoning boards, commissions. You know, change is hard. Reducing our demand for cars is very, is difficult and we are in a transition moment. In, in, on our planet. And you know, I know that the Planning Commission approved a project at the last meeting with similar parking demands. Similar limitations and consistency. If you're gonna do it is very important. Probably. I am probably the one other person right now in city government that gets more phone calls about downtown Troy parking. And you know, it is, it is always going to be a challenge, but we live in an urban area that is walkable. And part of that walking process is also an economic development process. When you have to walk just two blocks. Like to the parking lot that, that Rosenblum is proposing, you are more likely to spend money at our Troy businesses, walking past Bard and Baker, picking up a coffee. And right now, our businesses are suffering. We need more residents downtown. And as a landlord myself, I know for a fact that my smaller $1,000 efficiency apartments. Rent instantly. Before I can even list them, there is so much demand. I have 67 units in downtown Troy. I would say about 50% of my tenants have cars and in part, that is because we have walkability, ease of access to public transportation. Alternative methods of transportation like biking and scooters and that people are just not as car dependent. Um, it's been really, the last five years has been a really fast shift towards this. And so. You know, I think in, in total, we have. We have invested a massive amount of money in our new zoning laws, and if a project is in compliance with it. The law applies. And the time for backtracking and debating. And the place for that is in the city council chambers. And if people would like to see parking restrictions changed in some way, shape or form, please bring your ideas to the council and we can pass that legislation.
As council person.
However. We have laws on the books right now and, and we have to operate within those laws and we have to have a clear. And predictable expectations for people who want to come and invest in our city. So those are the points that I think I want to bring back and I would love for anyone in the room. Who would like to see parking zoning, those laws changed, please email me your ideas. We can work on drafting legislation and that can be applied. In the future, zoning is a living document, but right now, the document that we're living with is the law that needs to be applied in this case.
Hasn't spoken. Okay, so again, and now that we do have functionality, are we comfortable being able to close public comment?
Yes, we have proof of life on Zoom, which is. Because it was a public hearing and we advertised accessibility via Zoom, and we had to make sure that existed, but apparently it does, which is great. So you can close.
Okay. So someone asked for public comment, I will take motion. Somebody will bring one to close public comment.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. So as I was, I'd invite the applicant to come up if you'd like to address anything specifically. And then we'll move to Commissioner for the Commissioner comments.
If anybody here later, then they have to. You know, I'm, I'm happy to respond to any comments, obviously a lot. I just, for the record, you're watching Zoom and you know that another resident of Fifth Avenue, Ron Ashmam, at 1928 and registered for supporting the project, so I just want to make sure that's accounted for. You know, I think, look, if there was a word to describe our process, I think it would be responsive. We truly tried to be responsive to stakeholders. We've been engaging for six, seven months adapting the project and that process is, is ongoing. I think we've incorporated a lot of the concerns we've heard and that reflected in a lot of the comments tonight. I think we've been responsive to the historic building stock. Really developed design based on feedback from, you know, historic guidance of Shippo, our own, you know, and our, the Heartclute Museum. You know, other historians and architects. I think we're responsive to the zoning, you know, and to the goals of the comprehensive plan, both specifically and more broadly. And I think from a sustainability standpoint, I think it's a highly responsive project. This will be the most sustainable building in downtown Troy and possibly one of the most sustainable buildings in, you know. The capital region. We are at a point where in 2026, all buildings below seven stories will have to be electrified. We're trying to unpack that. How do we make these buildings work economically? Everyone talks a lot about grants and no one talks about why we're getting those. It's because we have a very steep hill decline. Every project is tremendously risky and when you load in the 10, 12, 15 year payback periods on the investments we're making in the sustainable product. When we don't have the options in the market to source, you know, standard HVAC equipment, or we're constantly having to do R and D. To come up with the best, most cost effective solutions that arrive at not just, you know, the energy performance, but ironically, if you think about it. Our building will produce less emissions than the building that sits there now, 3,000 square foot built. Because there is no gas in this building. There are no open planes in this building. You know, the, the idea here is we always think, you know, I come back to the original proposal, place performance practice. Project for us does not work if you do not hit all of those metrics. We need a better building. We need a better property. We need a property that fits in the context of the neighborhood. We need to be good neighbors. We need to empower our residents to be good neighbors and to be more sustainable. By providing the types of multimodal options and transit and walkability that we focus on in all of our projects. This project is probably the greatest reflection of that in a lot of ways. We're very proud of it and I think, you know, the, the support, you know, I think resonates and shows that. We don't take any of the concerns lightly. I will repeat, not, you know, treat it glibly. You know, it's nice when people say I'm a nice guy. I would like to hear that. I like to think I am. And, and, and the truth is, I truly enjoyed the conversation with Jerry. Again, we've had many conversations over, you know, the period of the past months. I, I respect her. You know, I cherish her as a historian of the neighborhood, as a great thinker. And it's unfortunate that I can't do everything that she would like me to see done in this project, but I think I've tried to do a lot. And I do think it's for the greater good. I do think at the end of the day, it is for a better Troy. It is for strengthening the neighbor. The neighborhood, the neighborhood that we had serious investment in and serious risk leveraging project as well. Very much want the opportunity to move forward. We want, very much want the opportunity to show Troy that we can build a better building, that we can build better infill projects. That we can be a model for revitalization in the capital region. That is what, you know, we're hoping who drove us forward will allow us to do.
Okay, okay, so it occurred to me that I actually had a meeting, Ray, the Rosenblum staff member, on a run that I wanted to disclose for the record. I did not learn anything new that was not already part of application materials and do not feel that it compromises my ability in any way to. To make a decision about this project.
No, that wouldn't be a conflict. It's great. You disclosed it, which is proper. If there's anything that resulted from that conversation that would form any type of basis of your decision making, put that on the record, the proceeding because.
There was nothing to that end. Okay, thank you. I just want to be proper. Okay, so I guess I will start off on, on behalf of our commissioners with some comments that I have. And I will have comments that are both in support of and seemingly in opposition to the proposal or aspects of it. And then I, there's one thing. That came up recurring during public comment that I also wanted to hit on and an offer that. As it relates to this commission, I'd be very interested in learning even just from the time that I've been a part of the commission, are, are the history of how many proposals we've improved. The quantity of type one actions that this board has advanced, the number of units constructed in Troy. And all, all of that effort supporting the position that, that this commission is pro development. We are looking to further the Troy Comprehensive Plan and encourage developers to invest in the city of Troy. And I think that actually might be an exercise worth doing with planning staff to, to look back and do some statistics on, on what this planning commission has worked on over a certain period of time. Similarly, I'm familiar with Rosenblum as a developer and overly encouraged and confident that they represent some of the best in the capital region and in the industry. So I want to just get that out front and, and understand that I'm definitely impressed with some of the developments that you guys have put together even in Troy. As well, I'm supportive of the design characteristics and growth of the project, especially with the passive house aims. Incorporating technology, thinking through the, the package room, how it can be a better functioning. Part of the building, how the project integrates with alternative transportation modes and the effort to make a design, an aesthetic design, which tries to complement the neighborhood without trying to mimic or imitate. That's that. I want to move into some of my concerns and I've, I've voiced these before, but I want to better frame my concerns in terms of determining significance under secret regs in Detroit Comprehensive Plan. We've heard Detroit Comprehensive Plan raised a few times related to the project. But first, I think I'll start with determining significance. So there's, there's really three categories to me that are, are pertinent here. Under the secret regs. So one is the potential for a substantial adverse change related to solid waste production. And the contributions or impacts of the project on cities or municipals, strong and sanitary sewer and water supply systems. That's my first primary concern. The second is the creation of a material conflict with a community's current needs or goals as officially approved or adopted. I'll get into specifics. That's Detroit Comprehensive Plan. And last is the impairment of the character of an existing community or neighborhood character. I think largely the concerns we've heard today kind of break down into those topics. So thank you all for indulging. I have written some specific things. So as it relates to Troy's comprehensive, my concern, and I intend for this to be conversation. For the, for our commissioners as well as the applicant to dialogue about these concerns. My concern is that. It's. It's contrary to select enjoying the use of the comprehensive plan in that the anticipated duration of residency would promote. A transient population which does not contribute to an established and integrated community. Or it supports the growth of the econ, the economy or population, which is the specific goal within the comprehensive plan. The design moves some habitation incentivize occupants to seek other accommodations for any long-term residency, perhaps greater than two years. This may compel those persons who may otherwise have been accommodated in a unit on that site, which encourages or supports long-term residency, residency to seek other housing. Therefore, an alternative design constructed at this location, which does not incentivize turnover is more likely to retain residents and grow the population of Troy in accordance with goal one. Relate to this project, supporting long-term neighborhood investment through rehab, rehabilitation of Troy's older and vacant housing stock. While this property is neither older nor vacant, I was in a stock, this development by its assertion, does not incentivize long-term habitation. By extension and consequentially, that does not encourage investment by its occupants. And last related to the Troy Comprehensive Plan, I see a potential for this to act as a catalyzing factor. Towards increasing rent averages in the area on a per square foot basis, resulting in a negative effect which would influence other properties to raise their rents. Thereby having a contradictory impact to the stated purpose of providing affordable housing to the availability of affordable housing in Troy. Which conflicts with Troy's comprehensive, providing accessible housing options. Perhaps this could be addressed and then eased or tempered if we have, were to provide an economic impact study. And I do see in the materials that there was reference to one being done, but I'm not sure that I found it. And so I think I'd, I'd like to understand more in terms of how this project conceptually or functionally aligns or addresses those specific concerns. And then I guess last to conclude, there was a concern we had about the potential impairment of existing community or neighborhood character. I'm concerned with what the project and its design does not do enough to honor the historical significance of the space. Or enhance the character, and I think it could do so. If it were to offer more place making or significant development of city connection and reform of paths, squares, public amenities or spaces. Which would better integrate the facilities residence with the neighborhood and by extension, support growth in the city. Thank you.
Sure. I think, you know, on the issue of struggle, you know, solid waste and stormwater and sewer. One thing that we do in all of our buildings, we actually provide proactively and of course it costs us quite a bit more money, but we do dual compactors. We actually have discrete, single stream recycling. And trash for our tenants, again, part of our performance approach, so that actually compared to a conventional building, we're actually reducing the amount of waste that's going to the landfill from our properties. So that's always a thought of ours, obviously. You know, and as far as stormwater and sewer, and I heard concerns about that. The city is currently undertaking a study. Obviously, we would expect that our approval would certainly be contingent upon there being adequate capacity. In the system to accommodate, you know, the additional load on the system. I will say that there was an initial review, I think we spoke about this in the last meeting. And the results came back that in fact, there was more than sufficient capacity in the system serving the building. So at this point, we're just waiting for a third party verification of that. That's the city's third party engineer, not ours. And that will also be subject to a D and C review. Um, and that'll also be subject to a D and C review. So it's it's, we're obviously concerned about that as well. We certainly don't want to create issues for the neighborhood, nor have issues in our building. Um, you know, I think, uh, in terms of, there's obviously also a number of things we're doing from, uh, low-flow toilets, low-flow fixtures, water sense that's standard in our building, uh, mitigating our water usage. Also, interestingly enough, um, and I may have relayed this last time, when we did the Vessina project, um, we, uh, we had a study, um, the study suggested or provided, uh, calculations that ultimately required us to do, it's a different, uh, sewer district, but ultimately we were required to do an off-site separation project. Looking at the actual utilization in the building, it's about a third of what was projected. So, um, we've actually added capacity to the Liberty Street sewer system, which is fine, but, uh, in terms of projections, quite, we were very conservative and we paid for that and, um, and we will be similarly conservative in approaching this project. I think, uh, if I can address tenancy, you know, I'm confused why our apartment building is different than any other apartment building anywhere. Um, apartment buildings are by their very nature, they have turnover in tenancy. That is the nature of apartments. You're able to afford to live, in our case, in a high-quality building and a desired choice neighborhood at a rent that hopefully you can afford, um, our expectation, and it's no different from the two-bedroom apartments in the news to, you know, to the smaller studios that we have proposed for this building. Um, I believe that, I think, interesting, you know, there was an interesting note, and I I hope everyone heard this because it it factors into our studies as well. Um, folks moving to the area from other municipalities, and we have quite a bit of migration from downstate and larger metros. Um, they don't own cars. They're used to a car pre-existing. Our economic impact study has projected that about ninety percent of the households in our building will be net new to the city. A lot of those will be transient folks coming up from other municipalities. Uh, many may be young professionals and just starting their education. Some may be local, uh, some may, as as Ed said, just from businesses around the corner or graduates from RPI. Um, they're going to be beginning their wealth-building journey. Um, they could begin that in Albany. They could begin that in Schenectady. They could become sconced in those communities. Um, and then they might move on and buy a house in Albany or Schenectady, because that's the neighborhood where they live. So the fact that they may ultimately build up their wealth and have that opportunity to do it in the city of Troy will only, in my view, be accretive to investing in that housing stock, uh, Roddy, that you talked about and that we agree on. These are the future investors. These are the future homeowners. Do we want to put up obstacles to them moving into the city? I think that's exactly the opposite of what the Comprehensive Plan has proposed. It's very much the opposite of what the governor came out with in her executive orders just today. Um, so, no, I don't think, I think actually it's exactly the, I think we're having exactly the intended effect um, long-term. And again, we see that in the existing buildings that we manage. In terms of, um, you know, historic, I I'd love to explore that more. I I, there is more that we can do to integrate. We're very open to ideas. Um, we originated the idea of partnering with the church to develop the pocket park um, on their parcel, but at our expense, um, and our ongoing maintenance, um, to create, again, an area for not just our residents, but tenants to convene. Interestingly enough, uh, and and we did not know this. I'd love to take credit for it, but we didn't know it. Uh, Jack Wade pointed out to us that that was one of the things he really liked about the project because historically there was a park there. So, again, I think we're investing in an infrastructure. We're also putting public bike racks, uh, in front of the building. So again, not just having indoor, uh, bicycle storage and maintenance for our residents, but making sure that their guests, uh, have a place to lock up their bikes. I think in terms of our greatest shared, uh, public infrastructure undertaking, we're working with CDT A, where we've literally built in power, uh, at our expense, an EV charging station on Sixth Avenue. Uh, if we can find additional ways to bring more of those those vehicles on, we most certainly will do that. Um, but but please, yes, I mean, if there are other ideas, we we are by no means, you know, we are very open to other ways that we might, uh, you know, participate.
Other things are also just don't want to cut you off.
No, no, that's sorry.
Um, so encourage commissioners to give their own comments, or if you had feedback thoughts about some of my concerns. Any other comments for the applicant?
Ri- Riley, you you mentioned, uh, wanting some of your points to be conversational, and I, you know, I I don't, um, respectfully, I don't share all of those concerns. I think, you know, the Comprehensive Plan, I've I've heard it used in this way where people are like, this goes against the Comprehensive Plan, but there are several points in the Comprehensive Plan that we could, we could reference where this project perfectly aligns with with them.
Sure.
Uh, one of the things that stuck out to me too is talking about affordability or affordable housing, which is, um, increasing a a problem that's becoming bigger and bigger in our community and and something that concerns me. Um, and I I don't, as a planner, like, how how do we get there besides building more housing? Like, what what other tools, especially in our, with within our purview as a planning commission? It's like, building more housing is is the way for my, in my opinion, to get there. Um, a lot, there's been a lot of discussion about infrastructure concerns as well, and I think uh, I I totally understand concerns if, you know, if you have a sewer line that's backing up in your home, um, we have really serious infrastructure, uh, problems in in the city of Troy with sewer, with sidewalks, with parking, with a lot of different things. And again, uh, new development, I think, is being scrutinized uh, for for adding to that, but it, but I see it as an opportunity to improve on that as well. How do we, how do we solve these problems that we've been trying to solve thirty years without building new development? I mean, adding to our tax base, uh, finding, finding more money to address those problems, especially dense development. Um, you know, I could see, I could see those, uh, concerns being highlighted, especially with uh, low-dense, with 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 low-density development. You know, if somebody was building a cul-de-sac, I'd be extremely concerned on the the, uh, strain it's going to put on the sewer system. Um, with a, I think, extremely dense development. I mean, that's, that's kind of the opposite. It's a way to to dig ourselves out of this hole. Um, I mean, that's how cities work. That's how they've worked for hundreds of years. So, um, I do, I am curious about this dwarf Mugo pine in the back, though. I think that's, um, something we should be talking a little bit more about. I'm not familiar with the dwarf Mugo pine, and, um, curious if there are some more appropriate landscaping, um, things that we can put in there, uh, as well as the three existing um, linden trees in the front. I know, uh, that was a concern that one of the, one of the members of the public mentioned, um, was getting rid of the existing trees, and they were pointing out the oak trees on, in the middle of the site that I know, uh, are unlikely to be able to be saved, but uh, street trees that are existing, of course, we'd love to see them preserved instead of replaced. I don't know if there, is there a compaction concern or something like that during, um, site disturbance or?
Uh, it, to be perfectly honest, if we can preserve the trees, we will. We haven't done a deep enough assessment yet. Obviously, we lost one of the trees to a storm. We're a bit concerned about the health of some of the trees. We will have an arborist table book before we do anything. Um, if we were, i- if there was unfortunate need to remove, uh, a tree, we would look at a replacement. Simply leave an empty, you know, hole in the sidewalk, we would work with the city certainly.
I see that on the site plan.
Yeah, and as far as the landscaping plan, um, I would say that, uh, you know, our our civil engineer has done a great job sort of laying out the green space. Um, as to the landscaping finalized, we're not there, and we're certainly open to suggestions. We always like more native plantings, as long as they're, you know, drought tolerant and appropriate for the area. That's what we focused on. We're actually undertaking a big project with one of the office parks right now to do more native plantings, and we're using that sort of a test to see how they do. Um, and that will include engaging a landscape architect to help us with designing that park.
That'd be great. The other, uh, relevant question, uh, especially with parking being such a sensitive topic. Um, you know, I asked Jonathan about the universal access package, and so if you could just go into a little more detail on how residents enroll and what kind of costs they would expect as well as the benefits they receive on top of, uh, bus access, or do they, will they get access to the the bike chair program?
Yes, happy to. So there is no cost to our tenants for this program. Um, we see it as, uh, a a cost of being a sustainable developer. It's part of our, it's intrinsic to our practice approach. Um, and so we bundle that in as a building amenity. Uh, we promote it to all of our residents at move-in, prior to move-in. Um, we actually work with CDT A, uh, to have, um, you know, them come and do enrollment days, do enrollment events. So again, really try to promote it. Um, and then in addition to, we've actually expanded the program. We we requested to expand the program. So, uh, this would typically cover all of CDT A's routes, um, including access to their flex service, um, you know, for interconnecting points. Um, as well, of course, as the BRT and any regular routes, uh, we did ask to also include CDPHB bike in that, so anybody doesn't have a bike can use the bike station. The, you know, in the past years, uh, one of those stations has been located basically at corner Broadway and Fifth, so it's a great synchronicity to this project in particular. Um, and, uh, we'll also build in, uh, and again, we're still working it out, but we would also build in a discount for car-share access as well. Um, so there would be a certain amount of pre-built in, uh, usage for that.
Uh, and I understand it's, you know, it needs to be on a annual basis or contract basis. Um, what kind of assurance can you give the planning commission for us to understand that's a a long-term, um, you know, thing that that Rosenbaum's doing?
Sure, sure. I mean, we contract with CDT A. We've already contracted steadily with CDT A for our other buildings. Um, a- again, I I don't, to us, we've already built it into, you know, we look at a tenure pro forma, we build that cost into our pro forma because, again, we believe in it. Um, I I think if anybody has read any articles that were talked about anything, uh, that the region needs, I have a high personal interest in public transit, um, and I believe that if we are, we are so much closer to realize, to a fully realized CDT, or to a fully realized regional transit system thanks to the good work of CDT A, that BRT is a huge step forward. Um, love to see more dedicated bus lanes around the region as well, um, so there's more expedited travel, uh, ITS integration, all of that. So I'm going, I'm nerding out on transit next, forgive me, but, uh,
It sounds normal.
We, uh, we, we do, we do annual contracts, and frankly, I have no commitment to, or I have no concern about committing to a longer contract. I think CDT A wants to assess at the end of each contract year. So, thank you.
I'm just jumping real quick, um, on that topic. Um, I am a transportation planner by training, and, uh, I was loving it. And to that point, I I think the T N, the T, the T N company is excellent. I think this should be a model for, uh, development going forward. I I, it was my sincerest hope that, you know, we can, we can hold this up as as something to aspire to and maybe even make it as our, like, baseline. That would be amazing. Um, I would also like to just sort of to talk just a a quick point in the conversation about infrastructure, and I I think I agree with with James that, um, yes, there's more people that put a drain, put drain on services, but then it's also more people to split the cost. So it's, it's, it's both. And the way that we get into better alignment is the more dense development, there's less stuff to replace and and repair with more people paying for it. So it's, that's how we get structurally back in line. I do think that some folks have worries, uh, in comments about, you know, potential taxes and those pilots and that kind of thing. Um, in the way that that could possibly eat into that dynamic, and I think just to that end, you know, here at the planning commissions, that's just beyond what we have purview over, and that would be a thing to take up with the city council or to the idea itself. Um, it's just kind of, I have my own personal thoughts, but that's just not what we're, you know, w- within our scope. And 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 then just really quick, like, two, like, quick things if you've considered, um, you know, communal wash facilities rather than the drill. And would you be interested in adding compost facilities into that, that mix?
You just hit on one of Zach's favorite topics, by the way. So, we we were, we we actually, so we did, um, evaluate doing a a central wash. I I think candidly, the reason we've done it is user experience. It it is a little bit counterintuitive towards sustainability goals, but understand that we are working towards a whole building energy model and and performance model. So we have to maybe a little extra roof insulation to balance that out for that tenant experience. I think there was concerns raised about the tenant experience, or laser focus on that. Um, we are evaluating, obviously, we use heat pump dryers, um, you know, which are much more high efficiency, um, and, uh, also are non-vented. Um, so not blowing anything out of the building. There's no lint trap, you're, you know, central lint collection, so from a fire safety perspective. Um, and we are also evaluating combo units, so combo wa- washer dryer units. Um, we haven't deployed them, uh, because we researched them and, you know, performance has been, uh, questionable in in the early days, but the technology has advanced significantly. So that is a consideration. But again, we really did it, um, on balance from a, from a user experience. And frankly, I don't think it actually, uh, we don't anticipate that it would greatly change the actual use, overall use. It would be machines being used more often. Um, but everyone is going to have to wash and dry. So incrementally, we don't think it creates any additional.
Real, real quick. So Albany to look best this year, they had a sustainability time, and that was a number of different compost services. We should be getting into the mic. Um, so it's something that we've tried to explore for our properties before. We haven't found a way to successfully deploy it. Uh, you know, if we leave something outside, it's stinky. It bothers the neighborhood. Um, we found about a, a half a dozen services that work out of Albany um, for our project that's currently under construction, and we're trying to figure out ways to bring them into Troy or find their partner organizations in Troy. Um, the key to this is going to be routine pickups, which is kind of the trick. But I want it. I know everybody wants it. It goes right with our core values. So it's not something that, like, we have figured out yet, or we're gonna figure it out eventually. So.
And, you know, it's, you know, I think like anything, you know, we we've come and seen several of these companies go bust, um, because it's a challenging business model to do that service. Um, so we're hoping that, you know, one of the new companies that has merged has evolved. And and again, it speaks to the financial challenges of doing these, you know, doing a lot of the sustainability. Just, we we haven't achieved it at scale yet. Um, it's, it's one of the reasons that Nicerda is partnering with us, and, you know, the the grant sounds great, but when you actually look at the delta uh, for the cost of achieving the energy metrics, it doesn't cover it. So, but but what that program is meant to do, it is meant to establish best practices. Um, and, you know, we will be doing radical information sharing on our construction costs, on our performance over a five-year period. Um, you know, we're committing ourselves to quite a bit of overhead, um, you know, that's not compensated in any kind of recurring revenue stream. But we we do it because we believe it's important, because we appreciate the work that Nicerda is doing. And, um, again, it's an opportunity that hopefully the next project, the project after that, and more importantly, projects by other developers will be able to lean on that, you know, on that intelligence and incorporate it into their projects.
Really, I also also just wanted to acknowledge that I I share your concerns about the sort of the upper pressures on on rents and things and and, um, I I think I sort of partly echo James's idea of, well, if we're talking about privately developed, you know, housing, I I I don't know that there's anything else other than more units that would drive it down, but I I also just think that, you know, this is sort of, again, kind of going beyond the scope of planning commission here, but, you know, it, I, I think that a part of the equation has to be directly developed, um, you know, public, you know, public housing, um, social housing. And, you know, obviously, that's like, not necessarily squarely within, you know, what we do here, but, um, I do think like that that would, that has to be part of the mix. Um, I I look more offensive to my, to to the applicant, but I just don't think private industry will ever fully address the needs for for, um, affordable housing. So
and and I hope, you know, that it's it's understood that, you know, we're, one of the reasons that this is a high watermark for our company is not just because of the sustainability piece, which we've been iterating on, but it's because we primarily built higher-end market, you know, luxury housing. This is an opportunity to try to unpack as a private developer without subsidies for the housing, how we can actually provide a lower-cost product. Um, I think, you know, Roddy's point is well-taken about the cost per square foot. Um, but I think that renters are not shopping the market based on a rent per square foot basis. They're looking at their monthly cost. Um, and well, what we're trying to do is provide, you know, something that is effectively thirty percent lower than the average market rent in the capital region. Um, that's meaningful when you line that up against the starting salaries for a a lot of our target industries. Um, and it bears out, again, I don't, I don't want to sit And it bears out, again, I don't, I don't want to sit here and spout the statistics that I know you have in the C D M P and in the applications. But it really truly aligns. It's, it's a little bit shocking to see that at that average rent. You know, our young professionals are severely rent burdened or approaching, you know, looking to live on their own. And so for that reason, that's why we're focused on this. We see it as a need, we see it as a challenge. And we're trying to unpack a better way to deliver that. And, and it does affect our return, I'm sure.
I know you don't want to, I know you don't want to dump data on everybody, but following the announcement from Governor Hope this morning, right around the same time, a platform was released that has a lot of renter statistics across the state. And what we're seeing when we look at Troy and when we look at the state in general is forty percent rent burden population. So what we're trying to do is create a product that, I mean, our, our single project is not going to make a dent on that forty percent. But we're trying to set an example that we can create units that would not rent burden someone. And that's rent burden, you know, per HUD, it's, it's, it's very specific. And Troy, Troy is right in line with the state at forty percent. So that's kind of why this project means as much to us as it does, we have an opportunity to learn and set an example.
Okay, other commissioner comments?
Thanks, James, for noticing the Mugo pines. Let's find something a little more native. That'll, that'll handle the traffic on Union Street, which isn't routine. But there are definitely peaks on Saturdays. And so for that reason, I would urge you to reconsider the development of the East facade as well. I think that your the Union Street facade, though Union Street isn't an alley. I shouldn't say though, it isn't. And so I don't think you can treat that rear facade in the way that we might on, on another alley. So that's all I'm doing is asking for reconsidering the development with a little more care. I mean, look at the back of the girly building. It's gorgeous, right? And the church, just a little more consistency. And then my, the only other thing that I would ask is that you allow us to be part of the, the design development of, of the facades in general, the skin of the building, not necessarily to influence, but to be aware of.
We're, we're happy to report.
Okay.
We told H R C, same, we'd be happy to, as design evolved, I mean, show how things are progressing.
Great, thank you. That's all.
Thanks, Sarah. Bill, anything?
Well, I, I started out by talking about parking, so I, I don't know if I didn't expend all my energy there. I'm going back, you know, on the parking issue, I think there's so many good things about your project. I just don't want the fact that I started talking about what I perceive to be a negative to the neighborhood, that you're adding to their burden and whether that addition is undue or not is something. Emily Men talked about being bound by the code, but the code requires us to evaluate whether your parking plan is an undue burden. I, I'd like to just spend a little time talking about beating this dead horse. What's this park share platform? The Parkade that you have. So tell us a little about that.
Sure. And, and, and I, I mean, I think it's, it's, you know, in, in full disclosure, we're at the, we've been evaluating that project. The year, we pushed back because we didn't feel it was ready for prime time in terms of integration. But this is where technology is taking us and this is where we're always looking at how we can be problem solvers. Parkade is a park sharing platform that would effectively allow our tenants who have parking at any of our properties to pull it, sub out use of those parking spaces. So the, you know, it's, it's sort of, you know, in the sharing economy. It's, it's basically facilitating that same kind of exchange. So it becomes a way to get much greater efficiency out of not just the public park, but at the private park as well. You know, there are technical challenges right now, integration with the gates and things like that, but it is something that we're studying very seriously.
And you're thinking that, that a lot at sixteen ten Sixth Avenue would be part of that?
Um, I think that, you know, again, any private parking lot that, you know, is available to us could potentially be part of that.
Who, who uses sixteen ten now?
It's utilized by some of our tenants from the scene that end of news.
Oh, I see. So the cars that I saw there, there's a sign up that says permit parking only. That's, those are folks who rented space from you.
You do.
They're only a handful.
Correct. It's, that's right. And, and our intent is, you know, obviously prior to construction or prior to opening the building, you would have to construct the building. And that provides an opportunity again to mitigate the impact of construction by allowing our contractors to park there and also set chronic boxes and other things. So it is part of, of again, you know, mitigating impact strategy.
You know, I think that, that in this, this job that is relatively new for me, I keep saying that because I, I sort of use it as a shield. If I sound dumb, it's because I'm new at the job. But, but i- in terms of, of evaluating projects, this is, this one has so much, so many different things pulling at it that need to be balanced. And the positives that you're offered in terms of green space. And I think, I don't think that there's concern that it's going to increase the push toward transient populations. I think that these are people that are going to be like you described, arriving, establishing routes, maybe establishing greater routes in Troy, but starting at a place like this that they can afford and that they'll enjoy. All of that's really positive. The impact on the neighbors, I think every one of them are expressing concerns that they feel in their bones. And, and whether that should stop anything, I mean, whether the, whether four stories is going to steal their light as opposed to whether three would, I, I don't really have any objective measure. It's a big wide street setback on the west side of the, from the curb to the buildings is, is like nine feet. So you're doing nineteen feet. I don't, I mean, I get their points, but I don't know that they, those points outweigh the positives that could come from this infill project. So that's, that's all. I mean, in our deliberations, I struggle with this. I really wish that you'd say I'm going to commit that parking space. If I need it, we're going to give that lot at sixteen ten to mitigate the nightmare, that's the word that some folks use in their. I think it will be a challenge. It's not Brooklyn. Is, it's, we don't have a subway, we don't have, we have better public transportation. It seems to be getting all the time and we don't need to go that far. But it's still a concern. So I, I struggle with those things. I wish you could, I wish you would just say, well, no, we'll give this lot to, to this building. It would, it would make, it would put me right at ease. I'd say this is a good building.
I think, you know, unbalanced, but I think we've heard from a couple of neighbors who are concerned, we've heard from other neighbors who are not. So I, I do think that that's, you know, that's, that, that has to be, you know, factored in. And we've heard from businesses who, you know, are concerned, some are, are, are not. I, I would say that we have that in reserve intentionally to absorb any outflows that we don't anticipate. But we believe, again, just based on the studies and based on our anticipated demographic. You know, we're not, we're not committing it, it will be there when the building opens. So to the extent that we have that as, as a backup, it is there. But, you know, I think, again, I, unfortunately, the thing, it's, it's funny, I heard someone who does a lot of consulting for urban networks. And, and I don't mean to say this glibly, but I think it's an informative point, which is, you know, Toledo, Ohio has a lot of parking. Paris has none. Where would you rather spend your time or live? I would probably pick Paris. I think that we're trying to accommodate and have buffers for a transition in a use approach. And, and, and to that end, that's, that's what we set out.
Understood.
Ground parking, anything you want to discuss about impacts or?
I, I have to confess that I don't know what Mugo.
Bill, for what it's worth, you seem like an old girl.
Oh, that's fair. Oh, confidence will get you almost everywhere. So, so.
On a bus instead of a car.
So let me, let me say, you wanted to talk about other things. I think the concept of pushing back to the Union Street side, I saw some of the neighbors and Jim Stev share that idea. I think that's really appealing. That's a better infill space. Use of that space than what you're proposing. But I, I, I just, if I had my druthers, if I was the king of the world, I'd say spread this out. Push it out to that alley and maybe bring it down a little bit. And I'm not sure I understand why you don't want, but you can talk about it if you want.
I mean, then, then where does the parking?
Well, I think it'd pass, it goes straight down to sixteen ten Sixth Avenue. Underneath your first floor on the backside, I'm not quite sure. There's, there's a, I'll bet you've given thought to this, and I'm just raising something that they raised. And I looked at it and I said, that would look really nice on Union Street. Because the facade you have doesn't really appeal on the backside. It doesn't say anything, but if you get over there and you look at eighteen ten, you go, well, what's over here anyway? Girly is beautiful, that side is good, the Biddy building is going to be great.
Radically something to be desired, but perhaps in the future.
Say that again.
Is it the radic building leaves something to desire?
So, but you, you could, you could add to it by pushing out to that street with a, with a normal setback and a sidewalk. And then the dining on Spiny's new building would be on a street where there's some continuity. So I, 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 since we're talking about things, I, I thought those were good ideas.
No, and, and we appreciate it. I think there's a misconception that we didn't study that. And that's why I asked Sean to join us, because we have ten different permutations of the building layout. Looking at that, and there are electrons speak to it. But in, in, I will say there are a number of details that, you know, thing factors we have to consider. One is the passive house detailing. You know, it, the more angles, the more complexity of the layouts of the building, et cetera, more difficult it becomes to achieve that dealing in any way that approaches cost effects at, at least. So sustainability was definitely a consideration there. And speak to some of the different challenges of voting.
Jean Corp, Balls are in Tuck Architecture. Yes, we did look at dozens of different permutations on the site, how to build it and layout on the site. We looked at L shapes, sheet, C shaped, U shaped, donuts, courtyard buildings. We looked at structured parking on the ground floor. Didn't gain any more parking with that, with the column grids that we have to slip through the building in order to support the building above that. So, you know, circulation through the bill, through the ground floor, if you can fill the site with parking, enclosed parking, it's in, lend itself to any more parking, it would cause congestion within the building. It also causes a bit of a pedestrian vehicular conflict at the sidewalk, when you have a garage door right at the sidewalk. Garage door and you've got cars coming in and out crossing the sidewalk. Union Street facade, which we didn't either. At least with the plan we have now, parking lot, you have some visibility to your left and right as you're pulling out of the site. You're crossing that sidewalk. We, as Jeff mentioned, the pass house detailing is very difficult generally. Pass house is a very simple rectangular mass. Air seal it as tightly as you can and every jaw is a problem. Or earlier designs that we had last summer, or more modern, actually worked better for a passive house building. And we challenged on ourselves to make smaller balconies, the bay windows, royal windows. The detailing of that is going to be a challenge to achieve our passive house goals. We will get through it. We've got a good team, we're still sustainable comfort on those details. And then the other challenge with the closed parking is it's not passive house friendly at all. You pretty much have to pretty much putting the building a lot stills and creating a thermal envelope, ignoring the first form. It's just one more level of difficulty in achieving the pass house goals. So we did look at several different versions.
And we looked at the unit layout.
Yeah. You know, more circulation, mean, didn't add anything of value to the building. So trying to keep it compact and tight works well.
Well, I'm not an architect, nor am I an expert in any of these things. I just know that looking at the building from Union Street, it was pushed out to Union Street instead of being an open parking lot through a gate. Lost those trees. I understand why people are saying, well, that's, that's not going to be very attractive. And, and if you could, you could mitigate that perhaps by taking the facade of the building that's going to be visible from Union Street and beefing it up. Listen to Sarah, she really knows what she's talking about. And I, I think that would make sense. Anyway, that's, those are my thoughts.
We take Sarah's counsel very seriously.
Just to recap that, the reason you had for not doing a design or a layout that goes further towards Union Street was primarily the parking provision of the parking space. And because to overbuild a structure, overstructured parking presents technical detail issues or challenges.
Yes, and the larger you build that building, it's worse. Even if it's the same square footage, when you spread that lower and wider on the site, costs just go up. You have more circulation to the single corridor, you have a U shape, round courtyard. Circulation inside, just more common space. You're building more roof, you're building more foundation. You see it in residential construction as well, you know, a single story, three thousand square foot house is more expensive to build than a two-story, three thousand square foot house. Just because you're paying more foundation, more roof, same with the walls, it's just you're paying more of those. And the buildings historically were not built through, so.
On, on Union Street, I notice there's the concrete sidewalk and it turns into a driveway. Can you just create that, make that a continuous concrete sidewalk and have that stop bar moves back to the gate line?
I'll second that.
Is there a pedestrian gate in the rear? There is, okay.
Details.
Not at this time, no.
One thing I'll just weigh in on the conversation around communal washing facilities earlier. The way I took the comment from the member of the public who brought that up was not just the use of the facilities, right? Seems like common sense would be more or less the same unless you're just wearing more dirty clothes more often. But just the number of units you have to purchase and the resource cost of all of those washers for seventy-one units versus, you know, twenty machines or however many machines in a, in a washroom. So I just thought it was worth pointing that out. So I, I understand those reasons against it. I mean, I lived in a four hundred square foot apartment. I didn't have washer dryer and I had no idea where I put one, when the store had available. But just thought I'd add that in there. Joining the conversation about the comprehensive plan that Roddy kind of pointed out, I, I tend to agree with James that people get it a lot of different ways. Comprehensive plan is obviously a large document. There's a lot of different things you try to meet and balance versus meeting other goals and infill development in general. Seems like one of the, the main goals of it is prioritizing development downtown. Probably dense development downtown. And I heard numerous members of the public speaking both for and against the project, saying that infill development is something that they want to see. Seems like that fits squarely within their goals, the comprehensive plan to me.
Thank you. Yeah. Just to clarify, in case I wasn't, all for infill in the space. To me, the concern was more so over whether we're doing infill and encouraging. doing infill and, um, encouraging people to stay in Troy with what goes there. Um, and I would say, I, I reviewed the presentation, think that was given to the historic commissioner. I understand there was concerns, especially from the architect over what was, um, included in, in that presentation. Uh, but there's one thing from it that I felt probably was the most empowering was I'm looking at it now, but the slide where they show the rear facade of the building and, and just a little picture of a shop in the base level. Just the notion of having more of that development towards the Union Street side of the building. Um, and then again, during public comment, we heard about a suggestion, you know, to build that way and potentially put back or provide more, um, more developable, rentable space by building out towards that side. But I understand there is concern now, uh, or there has been a concern over providing the parking. Um, that said, I think a detail could be worked out for passive house detailing over, uh, over a structured parking space. I don't think it's much deal different than doing, uh, air barriers, moisture barriers down to foundation elements. Um, you're doing it onto either metal deck, uh, you know, pan deck for, for slab on deck or, uh, sealing it to steel beams. Um, I think a detail could be provided. I really wish that there was, uh, more of a C shape or a donut shape between the building to have a courtyard space. That's something I'd really like. Um, but I don't know that really at this point, it sounds like the, the shape of the building is, is going to change. Um, so what's my, my last question to spring, note and ask, is there any potential to reduce either the number of units, um, or vied a comparable number of units by expanding in any direction? Is that, is there any possibility of that?
Not if, not from his standpoint. Again, as Sean mentioned, we have dozens of permutations and, and, you know, there are multiple factors in every one of them. Uh, user experience, sustainability, uh, cost of construction. Um, this is where we alighted to hit all of the metrics, um, to assure, I mean, could we build another story? Yes, the zoning allows us to do that. Um, I don't think it would ultimately, I think it would create more harm than, than it would solve for. Um, and it would, um, I think at the end of the day, what we're trying to do is achieve something that has appropriate scale, appropriate height, um, has that affordability component, uh, has that sustainability performance and and, and your point about the courtyard is extremely well taken. I mean, that was part of what, you know, we were thinking when we tested that structure out. But I will say, if we talk about neighborhood engagements, um, I'd much rather have our tenants going to pocket park next door where other neighbors are than cloistering in a, you know, on, on the property, on the gated, you know, properties, so to speak. Um, and you know, we're very confident that our users are going to get great use of Riverfront Park and the Uncle Sam Mike Trail. And I ride those trails myself all the time. Um, I never fear for my life coming toward the Green Island Bridge. Um, I, uh, greatly enjoy riding my bike around. So, but those are the points of engagement and those are all, those are the points where you develop a passion about, about the neighborhood and about this.
About the pocket park on the side. I think we see a little bit more about what the plans are, or at least hear a little bit more about that plan.
An internal courtyard also tends to feel really awkward for residents, like you're just like a fish in a bowl, you know? I'm, I, I just wanted to say, like, on the record, I'm glad that that's not being proposed. There was one that was approved when I was Eric's position and like, I was pretty upset about it. So your next project, don't bring one of those. It's going to satisfy us.
Um, so as far as the pocket park is concerned, I wanted to jump on this earlier. Don, um, so as Jeff had mentioned, we are working with the landscape architects that are office park at Great Oaks to, um, explore doing native plantings, uh, where we're going to be deploying specific pollinator beds with just, you know, uh, an assortment of natural plugs to bring back almost like a mini meadow effect, um, to, you know, promote butterflies, bees, whatnot. So we actually brought that same landscape architect over to Victorious Life a few weeks ago, walked the side yard and drew out kind of a conceptual, really, really conceptual, um, or rather, I'm sorry, I met with Victorious Life people and brought that back to the landscape architect. Um, to draw out a, a conceptual park, what that would look like. So we'd be looking to do again, some pollinator beds, possibly some benches. We're trying to figure out what's appropriate and isn't going to create a, you know, a, a problem of it used incorrectly. We're going to be upgrading the lighting there. There's some, some pretty old lighting on the side of the church, being able to do that. Um, and a, a nice, almost like a little secret garden walking path back there because the, the entry to it is relatively, it's relatively narrow and we're going to continue some of the, um, iron fencing off of the church to kind of impose that and give like a gated entrance to it. That same landscape architect is going to be treating the building as a whole. So when we look at the Mugo pine, again, that's a placeholder. We will be bringing in a professional landscape architect to consult on that. One other thing just I want to throw out there, that structured part, um, because we're something of experts on it now. Um, the building that we currently have under construction, seven forty-five Broadway in Albany, New York, we bought as a shovel-ready project that had heated indoor park. That is what we've deployed at both news apartments and vicinity. Um, the reason that that's conceptually okay there is because it's heated. So there's no thermal, uh, transmission into the space above it. With passive house from the energy use consumption standpoint, we cannot heat that garage. It's not practical. And in fact, because of the CO2 emission standpoint, we actually have to open up the walls and allow a lot of, a lot of the air to through. Um, you're right that it's probably possible. Possible does not mean practical. So when you look at passive house detailing, um, thermal breaks are key. So every one of those columns and beams cannot actually go up to the slab on deck. They need to be thermally broken, um, which is extremely difficult in a, in a structural capacity like that. It's just, it's not something that you see done very often. And in addition to that, the way that these buildings are designed is the plumbing mechanicals go down through the slab in order to get back to, to a certain, you know, point of, of meeting. Um, in order to compensate for that, a project that we just recently designed, we had to put in heated plenum with the excessive amount of insulation. That's even harder to do, again, just because of those thermal breaks, making sure that nothing is going to leach up and flow above it. So it's really, it's not practical by any means to do structured parking underneath these passive house buildings. But it really, it winds up costing exponentially more than you would see even for like a heated garage. So that, that's part of the reason that we're so, I don't, versed in that.
Thanks. It's counter. I mean, I heard Fly Ash mentioned, you were talking about concrete and steel. You're talking about increasing the building height substantially. All of those work against.
Sure. All right, um, interest of time, I think we need to, uh, take motions or table. So at this point, we'd declared the application complete. We've had public hearing. Next would be seeker determination, then site plan action. Correct. Um, so do the commissioners, uh, feel prepared or any other, uh, further materials needed to make a determination for seeker?
Ready.
If you're ready, then I'll take a motion. So we'd need a motion either for a positive or negative declaration. Well done.
I make a motion, uh, that we, uh, issue a negative declaration for seeker for this project.
I second.
No, you're good. Second. All right. So moving, no, you're good. Moving to a vote. Uh, but James.
Yes.
Suzanne.
Yes.
Anthony.
Yes.
I vote.
No, Sarah.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Um, next would be site plan. Any further materials? We're looking to see another revision for the, anything uh, that we can articulate specifically to the applicant?
It sounded to me like Sarah wanted to see further articulation of the, of the east facing facade.
I, um, I was keeping some notes. Um, what, what I heard was a subcommittee to review the Union Street facade with input on all facades. Um, uh, input on the landscaping plan because the issue about some pines. And, uh, I think so that would be the subcommittee. And I think your other condition, uh, you should consider is uh, completion of and full compliance with the third party engineering review that is currently undergone, being undergone.
Okay, um, so at this point, would you be amenable to coming back for the, uh, August meeting with those changes? Or with those additional materials?
I thought Andy was suggesting that that was a subcommittee.
Oh, I thought that we'd want to see those as development and then.
It's completely up to you. I was proposing as a subcommittee condition of approval, but it's completely up to you. You can do it either way.
Sarah, how do you feel about that?
Subcommittee. Yes.
I'm happy to be on the subcommittee to review those little dwarf pines. I don't know.
They're great in a Japanese botanical garden.
And Norberti's. Sick of them.
I love Albert. That's. Um, I will take a motion regarding the site plan.
I will make a motion that we approve the site plan with the following conditions, that third party engineering review be completed to satisfaction.
Full compliance with insects.
Absolutely. And that, uh, that we work with the applicant, uh, that a subcommittee work with the applicant, um, to make minor adjustments to the Union Street facade, um, understand and, uh, provide input to all facades of the building as well as the landscaping plan.
Second from anyone?
I'll second.
Thank you. All right. Moving to a vote. James.
Yes.
Suzanne.
I was appointed to be the community person on the board and I've been weighing it all night and, um, I vote yes.
Okay, Anthony.
Yes.
Sarah.
Yes.
Stephen.
Yes.
And I vote no. But the motion carries. So congratulations, you have site plan approval. There, okay. Taking nominations for, would like to be our volunteer for.
Yeah.
Subcommittee. James, Sarah, do you want to be on it?
We can need a third.
Sarah, if anyone else wants to be, I, I don't think we need a specific number, but, okay, so um, James, Suzanne and Sarah will act as a subcommittee for those purposes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you all.
Thank you.
We're done.
Six, six, seven. A two-minute bathroom break.
Okay, thank you.
I can get set up for this time, so.
You don't want to see.
You don't wanna see.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Gordon. Good to go.
Oh, is that why it's not turned on? It'll pop back up if you resumed. For the Zoom itself to like share stuff. Do must have gotten closed one of these guys. I just redo the link.
So calling us back to the machines back. Apple can, who is present?
Yes, I'm here.
And do you want to give us an overview on changes since?
So I'm Dan Betty with First Columbia Project Sponsor. So, thank you for having us back to present. So, last time we were here, I think there were three main items that you guys wanted us to explore, so we can go through those. The first was, you asked us to meet with Troy Fire Department, which we did. We had an onsite meeting last week with the Assistant Chief and did a walkthrough of the outside and the inside of the properties and kind of gave him the lowdown on what our conversion entails and got some feedback from him on what we could improve to help his his department handle any future calls to the property. So I'm just pulling this up. Eric, I stayed muted, correct? I have to do any audio stuff. Okay. Just share my. So as well to the meeting with Troy FD. I'm just trying to get full screen. The main comment from the Assistant Chief was to adjust the turning radius as you come in our drive aisle on the south side of the building. Point to it in a minute if I can get full screen, there we go. Down here, we have a drive aisle that comes under the second floor section that extends past the south facade at ground level and carries over, so the height through the section was fine to fit a engine rig through that space. What the chief had requested was that we feather this out, so we ended up doing that on our revised plan, if my next slide will load. You can kind of see it through here, but he just asked for a more softened radius to get around this southeast corner of the building so that a fire truck could get into the rear of the building in event of a call to the property. That was really it from the discussion on site. Everything else made sense. We're gonna sprinkle the building as part of the conversion. It's not currently sprinkled because it's a non-combustible construction type for the podium that's already there. But as part of the conversion to residential for student housing, the whole thing will get sprinkled as part of that project. The next thing that we wanted to address was the attention given to bicycle storage on property, so we've actually tripled our bike room capacity. This is a cutout of the southeast corner of the building where the bike room is gonna sit next to our rear stair. So we have storage for sixty-one bicycles in that room, and we would expect good utilization out of that space from the cohort of renters and student housing project that we've presented here. And then our last item we wanted to go through was the facade treatments that we had discussed at length at the last meeting, so what I brought is our original that we had submitted at the last meeting. I think part of the issue was a color calibration on our design system that we use to do this initial version. This kind of looks very salmony in terms of color palette. What we've ended up resubmitting looks more like what we had intended to show. I think it was a combination of monitors and our color selection tool in the drafting system that we use, so we're pivoting now to this color palette, which is out of, Sherwin-Williams has a historic line of colors spec from, so that's what these new palettes are from on the overbuilt section. And then, as you can see, we've cladded still that second level coming across the front. The other thing we've done, and also has fucked in the site plan, we tried to engage better with the Sixth Avenue entrance coming across the front, so we've added this raised patio section that is above the main sidewalk level, but it communicates directly with the first floor level on the inside of the building. We have a sunken lobby that is the main entrance down here toward the northwest corner of the building. But we have this as an extra, or added public space, semi-public space, but also another outdoor amenity space for the building that I think helps give you some kind of graduated climb onto the main facade and then starts bringing you up. We also eliminated that stair tower that was on the front to try and clean up the front, kind of was in an obtuse position to begin with in the original design. As it was constructed, it didn't need code for the width that was required, so we're gonna have to rebuild part of it anyway, and we said we can accommodate the code egress from both the roof deck and the first and second floors by doing an inboard stair at the center of the building, which we also talked to the fire department about, and they were, they were fine with that change. But that really is the, those are the main three things we wanted to discuss with you tonight. I think that's where we have left it from the last meeting a month ago. And I would open it to the commissioners for comments on any of the three.
Thank you very much. Okay, just also procedurally, we went through declaring the application complete. We set this as a public hearing. We can take public comment first and then give your own feedback if everyone's good with that. I think we'll be pretty quick. All right, so I'll make a motion that we open this for public comment. I don't know that we need motions for this, but I'm doing it anyways.
I'll second.
Okay, thanks. All in favor?
I.
Okay, so opening for anyone that would like to speak about the project. We applaud your capacity to stay.
Um, I will just make a comment that as this is barely a block from the earlier project, everyone who had concerns about parking, oh, sorry, Silva Menard, twenty-one hundred fifth ad, twenty-one hundred block on Fifth Ave. Um, I just find it interesting that everybody who had issues with parking two blocks away is not here to for this project at all. Uh, the building looks a little weird. That's kind of all on I, first impressions, the color was kind of weird last month when I was here. And this doesn't really improve the look. First impression.
I'll, no comment. Okay. Is it Mr. Farmer? Ms. Man?
Hi, um, I, Emily Mann, one twenty-two First Street, Troy City Council, downtown. Um, yeah, I wanna reiterate what Silva just said. It still has the same impact on parking, and yet parking is not on the agenda. And again, we're in a high-density walkable neighborhood. And consistency is important. And it's a funky weird building that you know, we're making the best of, and I'm glad to see it put back to use and bringing bringing more people to downtown Troy. This town-gown connection is so important to the economic development of Troy, to attracting and retaining graduates uh, from RPI and keeping them here in our community. And to follow up some of the comments that came up in the previous project that are relevant here. Um, you know, by providing a place for people who are at the beginning of their career, their professional career in graduate school and entrenching them within the city of Troy, that leads to homeownership. I came here as a renter and now I'm in way deep. Um, and that is how we will continue to grow our population, find people who want to raise their families and establish themselves here in Troy. Um, and the more that we can connect our downtown to RPI, to our academic institutions, the better for not only our businesses um, in our future, but also the better for RPI. Um, and I think that this is at the beginning of a movement of what you can expect to see um, under the new president um, with, with more interactions, so I'm glad we're taking a building that has been basically vacant since City Hall was renting. Um, and is moving it into a productive use. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else on Zoom? Public comment on seventeen seventy-six? Sixth Ave? Okay, um, then I will take a motion for closing public comment.
I move to close public comment.
Bill has second, okay, I'm moving to a vote. All in favor? Bye. Okay, so commissioners, any feedback on developments with the project? I will relay my own.
I like what you did with the original building. I think it's it, it looks really good. Um, not in love with the top, but I think, you know, I think it's a little too soviet still, but since, you know, if you're gonna keep it, um, and there's nothing we can do to change your mind, maybe doing something with the color will help. No, I mean, you know, that's what we're gonna get, so I just wanna make the best of it, and I think the red the brick red, um, is just a little too glaring. But aside from that, you know, it's, it's getting there.
Comment on the horizontal line, the way that you're adding all the windows to that in the current building is the same brick as the lower level. There exists student housing.
Yeah, the second, the second floor has brick around this. It's a high, like, almost a clerestory window, Bill, that goes all the way over this. We're adding these as a deeper window element to get better light. Because you can't really see out of these that go across the front. I actually have the original building in this packet somewhere. Just for reference of that. Or I did, if I don't, I'm gonna yell at my guy in humps. So this is the original how it looks right now.
You used or matched instead of adding the gray.
Brick is gonna be tough to reinstall at height, and especially how we've gotten these jogs that kind of float. There's not a great way to mount that. There's brick alternatives that you could do. There's sliced brick and there's um, a type of drive it that's out now that you can actually stencil to be brick, and it actually looks pretty good as a match. And if it's higher up, I don't think you'll notice as much from ground level, the difference. What we are thinking is to break it up and have it trend more with what we see in other higher education college towns that have institutions similar to RPIs. We looked at some stuff out in Ithaca or Cornellas and some of the other larger research institutions that are having some of this type of student housing built. And that was the type of design we saw. We're just trying to emulate that. It is a tough building to adapt because of what we're starting with. It's a great base to build off of. It's a big non-combustible podium, two stories, thirty-six thousand feet, so we like it from the structure standpoint. From the aesthetic, it's challenging to tie together easily. So what our attempt was is to take the second floor, create an interrupt from the base podium where we left the brick on the first level and then transition up into a similarly colored overbuilt tower with that same gray and then use metal for these vertical sections that kind of break up the front facade on either side of the colored band that goes here and then also on the return walls as you're looking at the more southern end of the U at this angle.
So, for what it's worth, the color does appear different like my laptop screen versus the TV.
And I'm actually noticing it from this laptop screen and those two here, so um, it is, I think. It's looking salmony on this. Um, but if I go back to the original that we had, it's gonna look even brighter. Yeah, that was the one we had looked at last point. Uh, I think it's too heavily saturated in color in this, where you go to this. This is the actual tan tone formula for those colors of Sherwin-Williams that we picked from. So this that you're seeing, at least on your laptop screens, is better calibrated to what the actual color would look like. This, I think, is still too saturated on the large monitors.
Sure, I, I could tell you were about to say, all right, um, maybe an idea for how to address the awkwardness of the divide between the top and the bottom. Um, the Finney Design Project came to mind in their treatment of a similar toned brick. I wouldn't, I'd be curious, I should say, uh, to see if you did like a black coating on that or a darker coating rather than that orangish brick, but I understand that that's kind of substantially changing the way the brick looks.
You're saying coat the bottom.
Yes.
So totally cover all brick and we're kind of totally different.
Not covering a painting the way they were in that design. I wonder what you think. I'm curious too, but.
Value with this design. I actually, I like the second story. I actually like it, and so, but now it's even further
Obscured.
Detaching the top from the grade level, and so I'm kind of with Roddy there. I don't wanna see, I don't wanna see epist at grade.
No, and I think that was part of our thinking was keep a masonry material down low. It's better to keep what's there because then we're kind of ripping off to do another masonry product afterwards. Anything might work.
Yeah, color is what we're getting, not material. And then another thing, this is just me, I'm literally playing around with a design on my laptop. I noticed the angled corners, the chamfered corners on that middle section, the second story. And I wonder if there's a way to echo that in the upper floor and perhaps even add like a angled skylight to the top floor. I can show you how it looks on my laptop if you want to see it.
Designing.
Um, you can take over the broadcast. Share yours. Mercy, don't worry. I'm hesitant with skylights because in my belief.
Yeah, understood.
I I understand the um. To echo that shade, yes, it's kind of be interesting and add some cohesion from the podium to the overbuild. I mean, it's something we could look at, but.
You mentioned a central staircase staircase in place of the one that was out front.
Uh, we just deleted the one in the front. There is a center stair. There's an angle that looks at it from the top.
Yeah, and you also have a lot of rendering, so we don't have, if you wouldn't mind, just slowly.
Sure, so yeah, actually, why don't we do a page turn? So this was our original that we started with that is blinding everyone.
Before you move off that, one one thing that works really well about that to me is in that front stair timing, but in world.
Really?
This piece. Such, yes, uh, to me, I like. It gives the whole thing that retro modern feel, I don't know.
And this is what we pivoted to for this round. Of submission, so this has our elevated patio off of street level, and then you go up to your main roof deck. Which is now accessed off of a door into the north tower that comes into our um. North stair tower. This is the rear side of the building. So our rear stair that we're gonna uh build around is located at the back. This is the door into our bike storage rooms. You have direct access to outside. This is that drive aisle that I was talking about earlier that we feathered out this turning radius so that the fire department's. Equipment can get back into the rear section of the property a little bit easier. We also added some green space in the back section that is not rendered here, but you'll see on the site plan. There are a bunch of shrubs that were added along this backstretch just to add some greenery. Right now it was nothing. It's pretty stark. Built environment from how it was left as an office, so it goes right from pavement. To curb to sidewalk and then to side of the building. Actually, people right now uh who are leasing this parking lot must park right up against the side of the building. Felt the curb being added at forty-five degree angle. Added some protection for someone accidentally hitting the accelerator and going forward, um, so it's a smaller buffer. Uh, from the parking surface to the building itself, and then this back section similarly to the front, um, this is. Brick and glass right now. There's a larger section of glass windows in this middle bay that does cantilever like this right now. Um, we were just redoing it for the layouts that we've got for our um units that are inside the building. And this is the nor- uh north facade. Looking from Blitman Commons, uh, which is our neighbor to the north, so looking at that side angle, uh, this is our other driveway. That is one way out back to Sixth Avenue. And then as before on the other facades, you have your cladded second level. Uh, this is a metal roof section on that slant that you were talking about, Roddy. It's, I think it's copper now. Um, and then this first floor. Um, I don't know that it has, when, I don't think it has windows right now. We would punch these. As part of the change.
You say it's copper now, you mean?
This roof section of the slanted piece, James, is copper on the original building. I can flip back to the original if you want to see.
But not, I'm assuming you're not proposing copper.
I think we would uh probably paint it to match the gray color just to unify. I think if we left it copper. Be kind of a clash with this palette. Um, and especially if the recommendation is to kind of do away with the more warm brick color at the bottom. I don't know that copper ties to the rest of this very well.
Oh, it ends up being like a greenish, right?
Yeah, it's a green patina now from back in the seventies when it was built, so it's aged to that level.
I think that's cool. I'd love to see it.
And then this is the south, opposite side, uh, looking from the police station, and that's our um. Canopy section that overhangs that grid of columns that comes around.
What are these smaller rectangles? Yeah, that.
These are, are those vents coming outside, Chris? It's our heat system.
Intakes.
And then this is the overhead view that I wanted to pull up, so there's a door that you can barely um see where it goes with this reveal. That we've pulled out of the north tower. So you get in and out of the upper courtyard space on the roof of the second floor through that. And it's all contained by a green roof element, kind of boxing in the um. allowable occupiable surface area for one exit space that's elevated.
So, so that's the limitation here, and then why you have the other empty spaces?
Right, because I'm limited to a certain um square footage for occupancy that only has one main to be aggressive off of that roof.
I think what would be nice is if you buffered that, I guess it would be the east or the the facade closest to your mouse. Well, not anymore, but that back facade towards the top of the screen, yeah. Um, if you buffered that with greenery, you know, to give, because those are residential windows, right?
Yes.
So, yeah, if you could buffer that with greenery and then. Uh, you know, you'd have more usable space on the lower side of the screen.
Out towards more Sixth Avenue, like.
Yeah.
Kind of reoriented almost this way.
Yeah, I mean, this to me seems the, just the layout of it seems a little awkward, but if you just. Yeah, if you buffered that that facade so that people couldn't like walk right up to the windows. Um, I think that would make a lot of sense and then give you more of that space. I'd love to see it just like a little bit more uniform. Instead of just sticking out in this, you know, this seems a little more random. I get the buffer on the railing side, of course, too. Maybe, maybe it's lining the entire thing with a a green buffer.
That's that's part of the challenge, and maybe that's what we do, because all of these windows are part of unit space on the interior, so. You have to weave around, you don't wanna put it too close to someone's window. I guess you can do shrubbery. That's not gonna block someone's window, but larger um plantings are gonna potentially get in front of people's windows and you wanna allow. Sunlight in.
Oh, yeah, definitely, definitely uh smaller plantings, but yeah, not letting people like walk right up to the windows, that would be great. And then again, you get more of that useful space down. Down the screen.
Then this is just a closer up angle of the main level entrance off of the sidewalk, so this is our sunken entrance. Front door, that's the main entrance through the main building. So you go in here to go to the leasing office, we have a mailroom inside that, um, vestibule. And there's a single run of steps in a small elevator that goes up and down. On the main podium levels that are already here, and that's an elevator that already exists that we're gonna rehab. Then you see the raised patio section. That's at the finished floor level of first floor. That we've built up in front of where the stair tower used to be, and then this bump out is already on the front of the building. Next to where the stair was taken off just to the south of it. You can see the um overhangs that we've got on our overbuilt towers on the north and south of the west facade.
Did you consider putting a staircase in this blank space, kind of where you have this person standing near the entrance?
Uh, here?
Yeah.
I think from a building security standpoint, we wanted this to be limited to people that are already inside. But it's not as much for a a true public space for people to hang out that aren't really residents. It's more of a resident amenity. So we'd rather contain it. Um, there is an existing stair that's pretty awkward on this side that goes down. Pretty steep to the drive aisle. I don't know if we have that shown. I guess we're getting rid of that and just containing it. To the entrance vestibule that used to be here, we're just enclosing that with storefront, and that would be the other way in. Aside from the old stairwell door that is here, this was the old portal location for that stair we're taking off.
Hmm, I I I get what you're saying about not wanting it to feel public. I I agree with that. But I think having a way for residents to interact with that space on their way in and out of the building, like. To to do a task or whatever they might wanna do there would be nice, especially like thinking back to. You know, like that university setting and and interacting with friends and stuff like that. I also think, yeah, I'm I haven't looked at the uh landscaping plan in detail and everything is dead. Um, but is this what you're proposing on on the site plan as well? Is there?
This is slightly more rendered than what the site plan has, so I can go to that plan if you want and show you. So it is similar to what I did on the back. There are shrubs planted along that whole uh front section along Sixth Avenue and then along the entire backstretch. Next to the angled parking that we changed to offset it from the building and not direct with bumper up against the side of the building. Um, we already had trees along the north side as it comes down the sidewalk of the approach, and we have trees on the south side. We may conflict with some of them during construction, but we replant what's there, and I think that forms a nice buffer. On the north and south sides. We're also open to doing some street trees if that would be desirable from the commissioners.
Yeah, I would certainly like to see decisional streets specifically. Um, in the front, in that in that buffer area, and then it, you know, I think if you could add greenery to that. Uh, patio area as well. You know, just just.
Certainly do some planters and planters and maybe some um. The gas fire pits would add a nice ambiance. You have those turn on at night and it activates it more than just having it be empty. I'm sure the students that are living there will be out there a lot.
Yeah.
Be a really popular place.
Um, I also was curious about. I was a little scared about the um, the windows, the the shorter windows, you know, above where it's a student housing and then on the other side. You mentioned that they, you know, are, don't really provide a lot of utility.
Yeah, these are how they're set up now, so we're keeping a couple of them at the ends of that facade. But most of them are getting cut down to a normal height. You brought across.
I do, okay.
What's the, what what function is inside in that part of the building?
Uh, there's a combo of units more towards the back, I think from. Roughly a third of the way back and going to the east is unit space, and then there's mostly amenity space from. The entire front section going all the way over to the um southwest corner. Is mostly public space within the building for um residents. And the core of the main floor plates on one and two. Is also mostly that because you can't get any light in there for windows. It didn't make sense to make units in there, so that's more like study rooms. Um, there's gaming rooms, some uh fitness areas, uh, stuff like that for an amenity space.
What's the um parking to unit? Where the parking unit counts?
We are. On our site plan. Or one of you may find it faster because it's super small text. Uh, for units, yes, for beds, it's um not quite that high a ratio, but. Yeah, that sounds right for on the off-street in this rear parking lot.
Um, you know, you mentioned how bare it is back there, and that's another thing that sticks out to me, and you know, I don't know what kind of parking. Uh, number you're looking to hit, but I would be open to softening that space up with with trees as well. I think that would be great. Um, I'd also like to talk about just the traffic circulation, uh, including how. Pedestrians and cyclists use the navigate the space, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Um, so.
Yeah, you go ahead.
Is there anything in the rear for them to access the walkway or the?
So right now.
The stairway?
I think I talked about this last meeting. There's a set of bollards. Right about here. That prevents vehicles from driving onto the approach sidewalk, and that comes into our property, so we could. Just dress that up, and we're gonna um probably T and L the rear lot. Just to get it dressed up after all of our heavy equipment's out of there for construction. But right now, that's the only um pavement to sidewalk access to get onto the sidewalk. From our property. Um, you could get on at the front if you were out there, but our bike room being in this uh rear corner. I think most people will go through the sidewalk and go this way. I don't know, you can't take your bike up the approach, it's kind of a challenge. Um, but I think most people that are using their bikes are gonna use them to ride downtown. They're probably gonna go out to the river and use the new. Trail that goes up to this building currently and is gonna continue north in the next couple of years.
There is also a gravel path that spits you out between Blitman and. The Uncle Sam lanes, which you can bicycle down, it's pretty easy. Um, so I'm curious, just like thinking about that sort of thing. Um, just, just establishing like a formal route for people, not only in the the front. Or the, like, you know, just, just thinking about it a little bit more. You know, seamlessly, and then um. Are people able to access, they're able to access the bicycle room from the interior as well?
Yes.
Um, you know, I noticed that that green patch that you had there on the rear exit and the bicycle room, I think, you know, just making that concrete sidewalk. Um, you know, minimum five feet, if if you can accommodate that with the fire department's needs would be beneficial.
We pivot back over there and we can look at it, but I think that would not be a problem.
And then these, these walkways that are shown here, um, those are shown in the site plan as well, correct?
Under the um passageway and then on the side of the building?
Yeah.
Yeah, those are there.
Are those five feet at least?
They're pretty narrow, um, and that's kind of hemmed in by the drive aisle dimension for a one-way going in and out. Um, the one on the north side I know is pretty tight. It gets as narrow, I think, as almost two feet in some sections. It's kind of just a detail to stop people from hitting the side of the building as they're leaving, to block a tire from making that turn.
What's the relationship with Blitman like on, you know, sharing that pedestrian access?
I believe it's on their property.
Right.
Um, so it would be theirs to maintain. Um, I don't think they have an issue with any students using it, so, and that's what we would exclusively rent to our RPI students, so. I don't see a, an issue with access along that sidewalk between us and Blitman Commons.
Yeah, I'm I'm a little, you know, I I get their limitations, but I think, you know, having a two-foot wide stretch of concrete is. Um, inadequate, so I'd love to see. A way for you guys to just form, again, normalize pedestrian traffic flow. Even even thinking about someone who's doing something downtown and needing to go get their car to drive away and like not even interacting with the building. Um, a resident, obviously, um, just thinking of giving that more thought so that it's like comfortable and safe and convenient for them.
Related to that, I mean, I'm the new guy, so I don't, I'm not necessarily privy to everything that's happened, but was there a discussion or or thought about? Not having two driveways, was is that, was that floated as a possibility?
It wasn't, um, the physical constraint is, I don't think there's enough land on our parcel to accommodate a two-way. On one side or the other, and then kind of abandon one side. It would have been nice, because then you're kind of um not worrying about someone going the wrong way on. The opposite direction and having a conflict, but there are signs at both ends of it that are, enter, do not enter. Currently, we would maintain those. Um, and it seems to work, we're talking to the fire department, they had no issue with it as long as we could accommodate. Here, the turning radius of their rig that they would wanna get into the back. And I I I understand the sentiment, you don't wanna. Not have a plan for people to go in and out and create conflict between bike or pedestrian and vehicular traffic, so. We can look at it a little more um in detail. What I think makes sense, if I have to look at the uh dimension on the south side, is if there's room. Outboard of those columns to do something that's more pedestrian dedicated, which I think is a natural place for it to go. On the north side, that sidewalk between us and Blitman makes the most sense to push people towards, so maybe it's just some tweaking on our part. You can't say that makes cut out, but maybe you do another set of bollards in the ramp um. To get up to that from this first drive aisle.
Right.
Make it more of a natural transition onto the sidewalk to go downtown and around the back of the building. And I think some people will get used to going out the front door if they wanna go downtown. That's the side that faces downtown, let me go that way, instead of fighting with vehicular traffic coming in and out. Um, but we can work on developing more. Kind of dedicated access for pedestrian and bike users that are coming in and out. Especially on the the two sides of the building.
That'd be great, yeah, I appreciate that. The other idea is, you know, if you're able to. Move the bike storage room towards the front of the building. I don't know, I I'm not gonna get into the weeds on your floor plan, that's. Uh, but that would alleviate that conflict, because you know, this location right here, it's like. A cyclist is almost like, to just use that one, that one uh driveway, both both directions.
Uh, yes.
Yeah, so you can also, you know, do some treatment to the driveway itself, just maybe indicate that like it's a shared space or something along those lines to like. You know, this to that, you may, you know, that could be a possible way of kind of squaring that, and if, you know. If there's enough room in there, I don't know what kind of treatments might be possible, but an idea. And maybe related to to finish up. Uh, pedestrian related things, um, have you considered, and I would love to see if it's possible to have the the uh. The grays crosswalks at the driveways, to keep the sidewalk flush across the side, the the.
As opposed to how they kind of dip now with the detail that we've inherited from.
Exactly.
Yeah, having a concrete continuous and then having the vehicles go up and down as needed instead of.
One of our um analysis, we better that out and. It's just like, it's a more gradual ramp. As you're under the building and as you're past the building on the north side, and it's a little bit steeper. Coming down into the street, but it could work, when some people with really low car suspension are gonna bottom out, but. Coming down into the street, but it could work when some people with really low car suspension are going to bottom out, but.
They'll learn.
Well, then we need, right, we need to prioritize people walking in. Their safety, I think, would be a worthwhile trade off.
That's not, that's not that hard to come.
Awesome, thank you.
How do you guys feel about the big student housing sign on the front of it?
Is that actually planned?
That's just a place holder. One of the highest parts of developing is naming stuff.
The bunkhouse, I don't know. Um, okay, any other, all good? Any other commissioner comments?
I'm ready.
Oh, go ahead.
I. I think. That I agree with James in the idea of. Actually welcoming every non-residence up to that patio and obviously it's your call, but. It um it just conveys this, certainly not um. You know, it it an elitism, but a protection, like what are we protecting these? Students from? I think it would be really cool to. Invite one out of a hundred people, you know. To just come on up. I mean, they're not going to go into the building. They're just going to check it out. It's just urban, right? I I like that idea. You know, we always swoop on to the. Super fancy office building plazas in New York that don't belong to the public, but we kind of. Usurp that experience, right? Just for ten seconds, and it's really cool. So I think that would be really nice. Um.
And just like, like your friends being up there and being like, oh, hold on one second, guys, I'm going to have to go around. It's just clunky like.
Yeah, and I feel it's up with students hanging out on the steps, waiting to get picked up. I think it'll be, I'll have a lot more energy. Here's my other idea about the develop, so I'm we're so, Roddy and I, as soon as we saw this, you were. Actually kind of excited about it. It's so much more interesting than the other perspectives. And it's kind of fun, and you aren't burdened with having beautiful historic buildings adjacent to you, so. Maybe we just have more fun with color and make the grade level, this dark. Flint supporting something really playful. Maybe it's gray and it's a little bit of yellow. Who was on the board with me? Probably nobody when we approved. Oh, you were, you were definitely involved. With that True Hotel, and if you don't remember it, they're all over the place. It's like, it's sort of a cheap. Is he, okay, so you remember it, right? It's got like. Teal and yellow, totally true. Right? It did not.
So where is that?
So um, instead of this, like, this is just my opinion, but you don't need an historic. Color palette. Do something playful because it is a weird building. It's weird today. It's probably going to be weird in the future, but make it fun weird instead of awkward. That's my thought. Please, the geometry is actually really interesting.
From this view.
From this view.
Um, I wanted to ask you. What about the depth of the windows in this discussion we have time and time again about shadow lines? Is there something of flatness, especially from some of the other views, not necessarily in the rest of the facade? And specifically like how close the windows sit to the face of the building?
It would be cool if they were set in for sure, but I don't know what.
What's possible. I think there's a little reveal. You can see it on this one a little bit better. It's not a flush window out to your. Face of the wall. There is some setback.
There's some inches, but. Yeah, we're talking about is there opportunity for more? Another uh question. Right side of the screen, the tower, the red section, the second window down, is the left side of that window sloped or is it just me? Uh, the left like vertical line of the window.
I think it's just how the um render is. It's looks looks like it's looking through the back of the building or. He's got a television in there that is like in the background.
But it almost made me think, what if there was skewed to any of the, to the windows, to the frames, to make them. Not necessarily perfect rectangles. I'm an RPI guy, I gotta.
Uh, Brian to Austin, I guess.
Uh, I wouldn't hate it. I, yeah, I'm a big Austin kid. Um, or even playing with the angles of. The facade itself. I don't know. These are things that are are coming to me as making it even more interesting, but.
Yeah, that'd be cool.
My only other comment is you mentioned stencil brick. Please don't ever use that. That's all I have. Stamp something. I mean, I'd rather you used any other material, but.
We don't like the.
The makey fakey.
I'm not going to worry about trying to recreate brick up here. We're trying to get away from this now.
Okay. Uh, any other, Anthony, anything? Okay. Um.
Well, we did, and we've have a really good relationship with them through this building and all the other stuff kind of in this section of Troy, but. We've indicated that we'd like to pursue the same programs that our prior applicant was engaged with. I think it's going to be good value for the students that live here, um, and it encourages less of them to bring their cars if they don't have to. You can just hop on rapid transit. We work with CDCA to do bike share. We already do it at some of our other properties up in this area of Troy, so. It's really a no brainer from our standpoint just to work with everyone else, and I believe across the street from this is where Rosenbloom's uh news apartments is. Um, on Sixth Avenue, they have that car share out on Sixth right there next to the charging station. Makes all the sense in the world for our students to join that program, but obviously they can elect to do it, but it's something we would provide.
And the shuttle is obviously stopping.
Yes.
Next door, so.
It can't get much easier access to campus from downtown at the site. That's what made us think student housing was the answer for this type of conversion.
Have you ever walked the approach?
I have. I see a lot of students do it when we're down here. When we were down with the fire department uh last week. They saw at least half a dozen, even in summertime, so it's getting used.
Good, it's the winter time and stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
Holding on to that head round.
When when going to this geothermal loop, we could just put a trace underneath and that could melt snow off into.
Perfect. All right, um, so were there any other um submissions or do the commissioners feel prepared to uh make a declaration about? The secret findings? Are there any other outstanding concerns for potential impacts that have not been addressed or further studies or info you need?
I'm assuming there's been a DPU review for this one as well.
Yes.
Yes.
It says any approved, the staff recommendation included that any approval be conditioned on DPU sign off. Um, if not, then uh hearing no sense of concern over potential impacts, I'll take a motion for. Negative declaration. Of.
I will make a motion for a negative declaration on seeker.
I'll second it.
I'm still hesitant. Okay, um, as for our site, um, would you be amenable to coming back next month with some more of these? Design changes for another review?
Would you mind conditioning approval for final review on those types of changes and getting me through tonight?
The commissioners feel.
Working in good faith with this committee over several years, I feel like we can get that done.
Sorry.
Yes.
It it would be a subcommittee to uh confirm the fun we address of the normal.
Yeah, that was a real comment. It's going to be in the minutes.
Great.
Uh, I like the project. I think if you can do that, but there there's a there's a fair amount.
Yeah.
So as long as you're. You got it all down and you, you know, we can go through it.
As long as the law.
Then I'm okay with, you know, doing it through committee, but. It it's more than I would normally, if there were, you know, a whole bunch of people here up in arms about it, I I would hesitate more, but I think. I'm just, we could, yeah. Ten thirty, I I can't.
Understood, okay. Um, anyone else significant? Issues, okay. Uh, then uh will somebody bring a motion for a site plan approval?
I will bring a motion uh for site plan approval. With the condition that there be a subcommittee. To continue working with the applicant on a facade aesthetics. And some minor. Site amenities.
And landscaping.
Including landscaping and access to patios. And.
Pedestrian.
Pedestrian pathways throughout the site plan.
Along with the commission, any approval be audition on DPU sign off. Um, buyer to issuing a building permit as well as third party engineering review. And the satisfaction of any conditions or requirements raised by the third party engineer. Okay, I I will second the motion with all of those conditions. All right, moving to about, uh, Ben, James.
Yes.
Suzanne.
Yes.
Anthony.
Yes.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Stephen, bless, and I also vote yes.
Thank you very much.
You were getting a curve ball out. Seconded.
Well, let's see.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There we go.